Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, March 7th. It is 6:31 and I'm going to call to order the Ayr Shirley Regional School Committee meeting. Those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by APAC and ASRSD. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the Chair, who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Mass Wiretap statute. The listings of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Per the Ayr Shirley Regional School Committee policy, BEDH, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the school committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to express an opinion on issues of school committee business as posted on the meeting agenda. Citizens will have three minutes to express their views. So I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
All right, Michelle, will you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Razzamaham.
I'm here.
Mrs. Granger.
Here.
Mr. Quentin.
Here.
Mrs. Reshers.
Mr. Rupert.
Here.
Here. Okay, great. So we'll start tonight with our high school representative, Ms. Anna Sanchez. What's going on at the high school?
All right, so first things first, I committed to university.
Yay!
So I committed to Clark University for a lot of reasons. I got their acceptance letter back and they gave me $26,000, which was like a lot, but also not enough for their, about, it was like $67,000 a year. So it was like, never mind. And then I got their financial aid and they had given me at least five more grants and just a bunch of other things and a lot of honey. So in the end, it ended up being like equivalent with Bridgewater, which was like my second option. And they also do a free master's degree. So if I go there, I can start my master's with my senior year and finish it the year after for free. And I was like, that's a really good deal.
Yeah.
So I decided to commit there. So I'll be doing English and Education and then Master's in Teaching. My second thing is we got our mock exams back for AP Lit, so that caused a ruckus today. We had to go over all of our essays and multiple choice and things like that. And I go to four out of five, which is like what I need for credits and stuff. But I really want to get my essays like way better. So I have a few things to work on. And Ms. Whit is really good about that. She goes through each of our essays and gives comments on everyone's essays. So we also get like personalized reviews instead of just the grades. And then tomorrow, we, the peer mentors at the high school are doing the eighth grade tours. So they're all coming over. I'm actually really excited about it because I remember my tour when I was in eighth grade in this one. And we're doing peer mentors this year instead of StuCo because there are peer mentors that are eighth graders for the sixth graders. And the peer mentors will be talking with those kids and it'll be kind of like a connection that we have. So we'll be doing the tours. We'll be having lunch with our groups. And then we'll also get to answer questions for them, which I'm also excited about because they had a lot of very specific and detailed questions they want to be answered. So we're doing that. And then unfortunately, I can't make it to Thursday night, but there is also another touring session from 16 on Thursday. But I dance. And then next week, we're starting, I'm starting the dance classes at the elementary school on Mondays. And I'm doing it because, well, Mr. Whit asked me. And I was like, okay. And then I realized that it would be a really cool project to do for my civics project. I think I talked about this last time, but for my civics project, I'm going to be focusing on like body positivity and movement within kids, like starting at young. Also getting kids into dance because there's different types of exercise than just like running and things like that. So yeah, those are my things.
Great.
Great.
Anybody have any questions? I do want to know if you, anybody else? Go one second. So you talked about the peer mentors, so that sounds like something I haven't heard of yet. So is that a group at the high school that is considered a peer mentor? What does that group?
So we have this company, I don't know what they're called, but they come, they work together with the administration and basically got a bunch of upperclassmen, like juniors and seniors, to come together and go to freshman advisories. So when we go to the advisories, well, before we go to the advisories, we have a session with the mentors from the program. And they give us like an instruction sheet and activities to do with freshmen. And they can be things like games, they can be workshops and talks about like perseverance and perspective. The whole thing is about perspective. And I actually think my advisory likes it. I know that some of the advisories have been kind of resistant, but my advisory really likes it. And we just basically play games and we talk about, it can literally be whatever they need as freshmen, you know, like if they need help with a class, if they need like a resource, we always help with that. And then we also play games, like the other day we did like human tic-tac-toe and like Pictionary. It was fun.
Yeah.
So yeah, that's what we do.
So I love it. I wish we could hear more about it sometime soon. If this is a new program.
I can fill you in on more information if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd love to hear about it. I think it's awesome that you guys are kind of mentoring freshmen coming in and creating a bridge. So when you talked about the eighth graders coming up, are these students that now have been assigned to peer mentors, like do you have a group, like how?
It's all the eighth graders.
Okay.
But there are a few specific ones that are also peer mentors, I'm pretty sure, I think. I don't know if they're in one group altogether or if they're going to be like dispersed. But I don't know if we're going to be doing anything like specific with them, but all I know is that they're going to be here next year. So it'll be kind of helpful for them as incoming freshmen to have that experience of being the mentor instead of being the mentee, if that makes sense.
So are they eighth grade peer mentors at the middle school? That's who they are?
Yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you as mentors were going to work with a group of eighth graders.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah.
Great, love it. Anybody else have questions for Anna? I jumped in there because I couldn't hold myself back.
I hope that you take advantage of the consortium when you're at Clark University. It's a very great experience, particularly when it comes to early education, when you're looking for particular classes that benefit you. If your school is not offering it, you might be able to hop on a bus and go to Worcester State or, you know, go to Assumption. And then that way, it'll help you in your curriculum. A suggestion would be as you're learning your classes and your teachers, you can check out the syllabus early. So if you have a lot of heavy writing, make sure you throw in one that has more testing so that you can play around with your schedule and you don't overwhelm yourself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because when I went in, I remember being traumatized because I had seven classes. No one told me that you're supposed to have four. So my first semester was very, very stressful.
Yeah.
So yeah, just take it a step at a time. And remember, now this is a little bit different because you're in higher education, you're paying for your education. Make your teachers work, okay? You're paying a lot of money to be there. So make your teachers work. Don't force yourself to feel like you have to fit their mold or their teaching style. That's why there's a myriad of teachers there to teach. So if it's not working for you, it could be the style. So try what you can, okay?
Thank you. That's good to know.
So one thing I've been impressed by, as you've discussed your college application and selection process, is your appreciation of the financial responsibility that a college degree is. And I guess one question, like how much is that driven by, like you're like, I know that I'm taking out these loans. How much is it like in school, you're talking about it with peers or advisors or your family, like where's that coming from? Is that something that your peers are thinking about too, or, you know?
Well, definitely.
Yeah.
I think like three out of my like six close friends, not including these like four of us, we all want to be teachers. So we have to think about like how are our financial situations going to be after we get out of college and stuff like that. Most of them are going to like state schools because it's cheaper, obviously. But also my mom talks about it a lot because I'm not paying initially, I'm going to end up having to pay her back because she can't like do it forever. So that, also teachers have been helping a lot, especially like Mr. Sefton and Ms. Whit, that they help a lot. But I had Mr. Sefton for dollars and cents. So we had to do like a whole budgeting thing. We had to create a budget for after we get out of college, like figuring out how to like get places and get a house and stuff like that. So that's helpful. But honestly, it's been on my mind a lot, just because, you know, it's sort of coming at me very fast, so.
Well, as a member of the generation that seemed to get really surprised when our tuition loans were due, I appreciate that that is something that you and your classmates are thinking about.
Did you visit all the schools that you applied to? And what was your, of the ones that you did, what did you take back from the tours, visiting the room?
I toured all of them except for UMass Amherst. But I kind of always knew I wasn't going to go there. I just applied because everyone applies there. But I, from the worst school, not to like put it down or anything, but with Salem State because the campus was so far apart. And I really want like that campus experience, you know? That was something I was really looking for, like framing them had that, Worcester State had that. It was all very close together. Clark has that, but it's a little bit more spread out because it's in Worcester, so, but I also liked that as well. Like I liked that about Bridgewater, is that you could walk places, you know? But I also noticed that with Bridgewater, they had a lot of really old buildings and like older programs that I didn't necessarily like anymore. Like I was really looking for a really like well-refined dance program and they're just kind of like updated, in my opinion. And Clark has a really nice one. So does UMass Amherst. So those were some things that I was looking for. And then in terms of curriculum, like things that, classes that there were, I really liked Clark's because liberal arts schools, there's a wide variety of options within the English department. So they have things from like women in the Bible, like Toni Morrison studies, like things that I'm more interested in than just like regular English writing classes. And besides, if I do make the credits for Lit, then I'll pass those anyway and I'll just be able to move on. So I had a lot of, I was very picky. Like when I was going to some of the schools, I was like, eh, it's okay. Like Wheaton, I didn't really like. Salem, I really did not like. So, yeah.
Was there a wide, did you find a big difference between the students that were leaving the tours, their ability to do that?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
The tour guides from Salem State did not look like they wanted to be there. So I was like, oh. And they kept reiterating that it was like, just like high school. It was like, oh, that's not what I wanted.
No one wants to hear that, yeah.
But the ones from Bridgewater, she was doing the exact same thing that I want to do, secondary education in English. So I was like, perfect. And then the girl from Clark was also on an education track, so I was like, perfect. And they're both super smart, intelligent women, so I was like, perfect, you know? But yeah, there was definitely a noticeable difference between who actually wanted to be there at the tours and who did not.
Okay, just a minor follow-up question quickly about tours. Do you, this is just my personal thing that I'm curious about. Did you find the weather the day you went made a difference on what you thought of the campus?
It's a good question. That is a good question.
What was the weather like at Clark when you toured?
Was it snowing?
The first time I toured, it was summer.
Yeah.
And I loved it. They also gave me a free t-shirt. But then the second time, it was winter and I still loved it. So I was like, perfect. But Salem State, it was raining that day, so it was kind of miserable, but I also didn't like the tour at all. So I kind of just didn't really think about it after. Bridgewater, it was cold out, but I still liked it.
Yeah, it's just my, like, there's something about being on a campus on a beautiful day when everyone's out and moving around and you can see the students like hanging out on the quad.
Yeah.
Things are falling.
It's hard to go on a rainy, cold day when everyone's just heads down to the ground and run into their class. It's just my, my little quirk, but go ahead.
Yeah, and maybe this is where you were going, Jim. So bridging these two, like things that are coming up, or that are, yeah, coming up. College tours have just happened, you had that experience, you're about to do high school tours. Like what are things that we should be doing?
Pretend you like being here.
Yeah, like what are the lessons that, you know, we should be bringing back to, like, from your experience in, you know, doing college tours? What are things we should be doing here? Do we need swag? Do we need to worry about the weather? Like what should our, you know?
Swag is important. Swag is very important. Well, I found one thing I really liked about the college tours was the amount of times they reiterated the opportunities you would get. So like travel abroad programs and like for Clark, specific for your capstone program, you can do literally anything you want. I love that. Because like as an English major, you can publish a book and then you like graduate college. I was like, that's really cool. But I mean, for here, I'm definitely going to talk about like the different clubs we have because I think that those are severely underappreciated thing we have here, especially like Drama Club and, you know, other things that we do that I can't think of right now. So definitely talk about the opportunities that we have instead of just like the classes. Because those are important, but there are other things that make a school a school, in my opinion.
No, that's great. I mean, I think, thinking about the like, I'm sure part of what made that tour guide experience at Salem State, I mean, I don't know again how they're picking them or what the experience was really like, but, you know, it's how you prepare those students to lead that tour and are they, you know, even if they're not an English major, can they speak to the person who's going to be part of the English program?
Yeah, exactly.
So thinking about how we prepare our seniors to, you know, speak to a group of eighth graders, they're going to have a whole bunch of different interests, right? And how do you like make sure like, all right, I'd like, not that you need to study, but like, all right, I know like a few different types of clubs, not just the one sign. And like, am I thinking about what my friends are doing? So that's great.
And to add to that, I hope that's being shared amongst the other tour guides because I've heard directly that we could definitely use some improvement in our tours.
I think there's one thing to consider is the, and I know you don't have all the background on the mentoring program, but the nature of the selection process of mentors, that started last spring. And so students essentially apply to express their interest in supporting students as they transition to the school. So the group of mentors is meant to be a cross-section of the school who can, I don't want to say sell the school, but who can connect with kids.
Right.
And really what Anna's talking about is like connecting with the tour guides and helping her to see her place in the space. And so that's what our mentors, both at the high school and at the middle school, are essentially, have been working on for the entire year, connecting with kids.
Yeah.
And so that skill is one that's going to be huge in helping to facilitate the tour. So if we think about the past, Anna said before, that StuCo Student Council had been the ones who had been facilitating these tours in the past, but those students hadn't received this level of training all year on how to connect with other students, how to support other kids. And, you know, the reality is that these kids are choosing to be mentors. Like they're saying, I want to, you know, walk students through the high school process and help them understand it. So it's a little different.
I love that program. That sounds really great.
That's great.
Well said.
And I hope the field is getting shown off because I hear the tech was, used that as a big recruiting tool a few years ago. And, you know, my Connor's classmates were leaving because they had a great new field and ours was lousy. So I hope that's getting shown off.
Okay, anyone else? We could keep you all night, honestly. Like you're the best part of our meeting. So I know we end up spending a lot of time with you, but we just like hearing what's going on in the school and connecting with you. So thank you for indulging us in all our questions and, you know, good luck with the rest of your month and we'll see you in April.
Congratulations.
Yeah, and congratulations on making a decision. Good choice.
Bye.
Bye, thanks. All right.
T-shirts have a lot of mileage.
Yeah, swag is, swag.
Water bottle, lanyard?
My daughter's a senior and she got, one of, one of the schools she got into sent her a very nice winter hat. I mean, it's, it's nice. Wool, like a, can't, nope, no interest, won't wear it. She gets a t-shirt from a place, not a very nice t-shirt, loves it, wears it all the time. T-shirts are the way to go.
Yeah, I, yeah. I think anything you can give a kid that's free.
Yeah.
And some cookies.
They're a little picky now, though. I think they're more picky than probably when we were in school and got through things.
Hopefully like a flyer with everything we offer would at a minimum be something we're handing out to the, to the eighth graders coming in, right? Like every club we offer, every sport we offer.
I'm kind of excited about the peer because I think the thing is, is if we can have people that have the skills to be able to help someone envision themselves in a place, it's a lot easier. I mean, you know, when you're, think about us when we're going to a new job, you know, you have to envision yourself being there and figuring out how you're going to fit in. So if we have people here that are signing up to be mentors to help them envision themselves being here, I think that's more than half the battle. I mean, we obviously want to give swag, but I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah, yes, fine. Let's be honest, it's a public school. Like they have a couple of choices. It's not like college.
There's lots of things that, that we can do much easier than the show but tech can do. And that's not a shot at the show but tech, it's a good school.
Yeah.
But the, just the size difference, they're about twice, twice the size that we are. We are now looking, we have made a shift to now look at our kids as individuals, not groups, right? You know, we look at group data for trends and to make decisions, but we look at students as individuals and it's already, it's already happening now, but going into next year, it's going to be even more refined. A student who is struggling is going to, the parents are going to get a phone call, have a meeting if necessary, an individual action plan will be created for that student before they fail.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So for, for us to do that with 450 students, it's doable. And that level of belongingness and, and connectedness to the school is much easier, especially with the relationships our teachers are already offering with students. But for, for a bigger school like tech with two, with an academic and then trade offerings, that's going to be really difficult for them to do. The other part of it, we've talked about this before, and this is what I'm going to be talking about Thursday night, is just the opportunities to participate in everything that you want to participate in. You can do that here. At a, at a bigger school, there's, the opportunities are there, but there are cuts and there's, there's more cuts. Now, we, we do have some sports where we do have to make cuts, but there are opportunities athletically, arts, robotics, where students can just participate deeply and meaningfully in so many different, different aspects. I mean, it's, it's not a sales pitch, it's what the school actually is. It's just we, we need to do a better job of advertising that. I think, I think you're going to see this year, I know that the high school administration and our Director of School Counseling have been working on that, so hopefully will be better reports coming to us this, after this week than we had last year.
I think the entire time we've done our committee since it was formed, the only thing that was rejected was the Asheship Club. Everything else, you guys, we tried.
I think that sounds fun, actually, Asheship Club.
I don't think it was formally into, um, was it?
It was always being getting in a boat, on the water.
Well, that's a good point. They can do it from the shore.
Maybe not. Maybe we'll live it again next year.
Yeah, well, I guess, I think as a school committee, we're extremely supportive. But one other thing I would just want to say, when you mentioned like everyone, most people get to participate. Not only do we have students participating, but we have successful programs. If you look at our athletics programs, I mean, just our basketball programs playing in their Sweet 16 tonight, like there's, there's success in every level. So that, you know, we, we may have kids that, you know, might just step on the field, but there's also a lot of success in our programs.
Yeah, the high school made significant progress in accountability data, you know, not that that's everything.
Yeah.
But if, if you are interested in, if you're a student who is really interested in a four-year high school, this should be your choice. And not to take anything away from tech, it's a good school, they send kids to college too. But we, you know, if you, if you look at accountability data, we are certainly outperforming them as compared.
Well, that's a little bit of what concerns me because I think the tech, they're 100% there is such a need for the education that it's designed for. I feel like they're starting to try to sell it for things that it's not, in my mind, designed for.
Sure.
They're trying to make it and project it to kids when they go there as this is, if you want to get into a university, like this is the option. And I don't think that's what it's designed for. And it concerns me that that's how it's being sold to kids.
You're not the only one. There's actually an article, Charlie, help me out, who just released that article? I can't.
Was it the Globe?
It might have been the Globe, but not the tech. They're, as far as what I've seen, they're very ethical about who, who, who they choose as students. Not all tech schools are. And there's actually some pushback from the state about how many students are going to tech schools and then aren't actually going into that trade after four years of, of attending. So much like we get looked at for students who go into two and four-year colleges after graduation, I believe that the state is looking at, possibly looking at how many of their students actually go into the, the trades that they're trained in. Now that, I don't believe that currently happens at all. I could be mistaken. I, I.
So that's the second part of my question is, like what you mentioned in terms of, you know, smaller school, looking at students as individuals, setting them up for success, like all of this, to me, that's, that's also geared to parents. So I don't know.
Well, that's why I'm talking about that Thursday night when, when the parents are here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's not necessary. Some of that will be in during the tour and the visit, right? To try to get students to understand, we're trying to, to make them feel a sense of belonging and part of, of the school. But the, the seniors are going to do a much better job at that than, than I will talking to a bunch of youth. Yeah.
I think one of the moves that kind of gets overlooked a little bit, unintentionally, that some of that when we get parents in is like, you know, we've, obviously, you know, we spend a lot of time trying to get kids ready for more education, right, to get through and go to some other place. But we have a, a big portion of our student body that that's not going to happen. You know, it's kind of like the argument when somebody goes to a four-year college and gets a liberal arts degree. It's like, well, it's like, well, how are you going to apply that? It's like, well, it applies everywhere. It teaches you how to think, how to grow. Those aspects of things that happen in high school, and especially in this type of environment, that can really help you moving on, even though you may not be going to a four-year college every time. And I think that particular, I think there's a lot of parents that want to see, you know, there's a certain structure and discipline to what we're doing to try to get to an end here, to make sure that they're going to be successful where they go up to college and not. I think a part of the time, we can focus at that group.
I think that, that's a good point. Not, not everyone is going to go to a, a four-year school. I, I think our definition of succeeding with, with our students is that they have that choice. So if they want to, they have the choice to go to the four-year school or the two-year school, but it's the choice of being able to do what they want, not having a, not having a choice, right? This, you were not able to get into the four or two-year school, so, so this is what you have to do. Choices is really what we hope our students have when they graduate and leave us, right?
And preparedness for their choice.
I'm sorry?
And preparedness for the choice they make.
Preparedness for the choice, absolutely.
All right, I'm going to move on to our presentation and discussion on the ASRSD All right, I'm going to move on to our presentation and discussion on the ASRSD Population Study. Tonight, we have Mr. Mac Reed. Nice to see you, Mr. Reed, and Dr. Renda.
Well, I think you did a great job. I think there are two familiar faces in here that probably don't need any introduction. This is the first population study that we've actually had since ASRSD regionalized in 2011. And so we reached out to the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools for assistance with this. We were lucky enough to be set up with Mr. Mac Reed, who is a former superintendent in Shirley, and I believe assisting him with some of this was Mr. George Frost, who is a former superintendent in Heir.
Right before we came together.
Yes, I know that Kevin and you, Michelle and Jim remembered working with Heir, with George back at that time. And the two of us were happy to be involved in the formation of the region here, and the school certainly looks different than when we were here. So, it's good for you. And Michelle, I was going to comment on your comment about the weather. One of my daughters visited six colleges, and two of them, it was raining very hard. She didn't consider either of those. Whether it was a coincidence or not, but I think there's something.
I think there's something there, yeah.
So, I'll see if I can walk you through this, so that I gave you a lot of information, and some of it may have been a little confusing, but hopefully, by the time we're finished, I'll be on the same page. So, okay. So the big thing here is the federal rules that require one person, one vote. And just especially, I'm sure a school committee knows this, but for people who might be watching this, it really means that every, each of you as school committee members are supposed to be representing the same number of constituents, no matter from which town you live. So, right now, you're out of compliance by not a lot, but a little bit at this point. But I think that may be growing as the populations change between the two towns. So, your regional agreement, when it was set up, it said you were going to use weighted votes, but at the time, the attorney that was working with the regional study committee found out that the prisoners at MCI were counted in the population count for Shirley, because they technically lived there, and that's what the law says. So, your two towns were pretty equal when you included prisoners at that time. So the decision was made that you wanted three school committee members from each town, and when you looked at the populations, they were close enough, so that three equal votes in each town made sense at that time. But your regional agreement says that every five years, you're supposed to take a look at this and see if you're out of compliance with that to make sure that your school committee members are representing the same number of people. And it says you have to use the federal census. And it also says, it surprised me a little bit, that it says you have to use, to do this every five years. Well, as you know, the federal census only comes out every 10 years, but there's an interesting word in there, and in that last line, it says, "Based on the then-current United States Census estimates." Well, the census, federal census does estimate the population every year. And so there is a way to look at that in five years, to use their estimated census. Okay, well, these are the, when we looked at the federal census, these are the numbers. You have almost 16,000 people living in your two towns. And so those are the numbers that we have to use in order to determine the weighting of the school committee. So, the way that happens, if you divide the 15,000, nine or 10 population by the six school committee members, it would say that each of you should be representing about 2,652 constituents. So currently, you are representing a difference of about 13%. And the regulations say that you have to be within 10%, each of you has to be within 10% of every other person on the committee of representing constituents, and so right now, you're about 13% difference, and that is, that Heir is, Heir representatives are representing about 13% more constituents than the three of you in Shirley. Okay, well, here's the vast general law that outlines the five options, and this has been based and backed up by case law that says that you have to be within a 10% standard deviation from each other to be legal. All right, so I'd like to just go through the five options. It's interesting to me that not all of the five options actually end up with a one-person, one-vote situation, or they don't have to be, they can't be, but anyway. So the first option is that school committee members represent, that the towns have a number that makes sense. So if Town A has 5,000 people, Town B has 5,000 people, you choose to have six school committee members, each having three, makes a lot of sense. Let's say Town A has 4,000 people, and Town B has 2,000 people. Under this option, you might have four school committee members from Town A, two school committee members from Town B. Could have eight and four, but you would have to have that same ratio. Okay, option two is not very used. It's having district-wide elections. That would be when all of the members who are, all of the people who are candidates, who are running for office, would be on the same ballot. And the people in Heir and the people in Shirley would look at this exact same ballot of all these same people. And if the regional agreement says, "That would be six school committee members," whoever the top six vote-getters are, then on your school committee. The problem with this is that theoretically, all six school committee members could come from one of the towns, and the other town could have none. So obviously, that's not a very good option, would seem. So option three is a variation of that, and that is when you determine how many school committee members you want in each community. So if ahead of time, like happened here, it was determined that there would be three school committee members in each town, the ballots would still have all of the candidates from both towns on the same ballot, people in both towns would vote on the same ballot, and the three top vote-getters in Heir would be elected, and the three top vote-getters in Shirley would get elected. So it's certainly a more fair way of happening. Option four, and I'll go over this in a minute, is what you have, is the weighing of votes. And so, again, you can have any number of school committee members. The originators of their agreement could have said you wanted eight, or four, or 10, but they chose three, obviously. But it's an easy way to proportion them, so that both, all school committee members are representing the same number of people. And option five is only used in, pretty much in one place. This is when another elected committee in your community is actually appointing school committee members. And the only place that this really happens in the state is for vocational technical schools. So some of them have, like, 15 towns, and so, and even no matter, like, Asavet, Marlborough was much bigger than, I think, probably bigger than all the other 14 towns that are in there. They only have one vote when the select board or their town, whatever, government selects one person from each of the towns. That's generally the only time that that's used. Okay, so let's go back to your situation, where at the moment, you are having to use option four with the weighted votes. So I hope I don't make this too complicated here. It really isn't, but based on the population, Heir should have 55% of the vote of the school committee, and Shirley should have 45%. So if you take 55% of six school committee members, Heir would have 3.2 total votes. And if you divide that by the three members, each member would get 1.1 vote. I'll stop in a minute here and make sure we're all on the same page. So Shirley.
Mac, but you said 1.1, but the slide says.
Yeah, I'm a little ahead of this. This is what we're going to end up with. Okay, all right, thank you, Kevin. So Shirley, at 45% of six, would have 2.8 total votes. Divided by three school committee members, each Shirley vote, school committee member would have 8.9 vote. But what we have found, in our experience of working with other school districts, no school committee member wants to have less than a full vote. So by moving the Shirley vote, individual votes from 0.9 to 1, that requires us moving the 1.1 Heir vote up to 1.2. And so that would give Heir 3.6 total votes, Shirley 3.0 votes. And that actually, the 3.6 out of the six votes is basically the 55% percentage of votes that Heir is supposed to have, and the three out of six, 6.6, and that was the total number of votes. Three out of 6.6 is about 45%. So that gets you to very close to the right proportion. So that would mean that each of your votes, I know that in most places that you don't vote on town lines, but when, that's something Michelle will have to be, have her calculated, calculate or out to count the votes when you vote, so some people have 1.2 and some people have 1. So, does that all make sense so far? So, as I mentioned, your regional agreement says this is supposed to be reviewed every five years. And if you were, wanted to change to one of the other four options, that would require an amendment to your regional agreement, and that would mean, obviously, going back to the towns and having each of your towns vote on their amended regional agreement. So it's a significant thing to do that. So, there are a couple of options, but right now, you're required to use the federal census every 10 years and an estimate every five years in between. You obviously would have options of only using the 10-year federal census, and/or you could use a 10-year federal census and a local census in five years. But again, either of those options would require amending your regional agreement, which is, again, not a very easy thing to do. So that's basically where we are. That kind of voting would get you back into compliance, and Department of Education would be very happy.
So I will say, just one, just to point out one thing. We made some changes to our regional agreement to kind of clean up from when we established it.
Yes.
Because some of those, some of the language in there wasn't relevant anymore, since we weren't in a new region. And one of the things we did change is the census. I believe we changed it to every 10 years, if I'm looking at them. I mean, it hasn't been voted on, so we made changes, sent them to the state to be reviewed, and we haven't heard back from them. But I'm looking at the mocked-up version.
And that has been voted by your towns?
It hasn't been voted by the towns. It was voted by the school committee and sent for review by the state. So if you look at, on our mocked-up version, we changed, the population rule review will occur every five years. We changed that to 10 years, consistent with the United States Census schedule. So that has been modified and voted on by our board, but we submitted it, I mean, we haven't heard back since 2018, but COVID happened, and we started to kind of push that again.
You submitted it to the towns?
No, we submitted it for, so we were advised to submit it to DESI, is that who we submitted it to, for review before we brought it to the towns? Because we didn't want to have the towns vote on something that was going to be rejected by DESI. So my understanding is, we haven't had feedback received from DESI, or is that correct? But that change has been voted on by our board. I'm just throwing that out there, so you know that we did notice that and addressed it.
I don't think I have any problem with that.
Yeah, okay. Anybody have any questions? Jim?
On the DESI gets applied across the state, is it like going 59 miles an hour on Route 2? Or is it like, you know, going 90 miles an hour on Route 2? It's like, well, this is reviewed, and you have to make a change, or it's like, well, you try to comply when we comply, and go along and get along.
To your point, Jim, there are a lot of districts that aren't in compliance, and DESI doesn't have the ability and authority to follow up on too many of those things. But that's what the law says, and that's what we're supposed to do.
Right.
I was, I mean, I think it's a good question, Jim. I think, I mean, I don't know of any school committee that has been sued, and there's more than enough case law about, you know, one person, one vote for other issues of representation, so there are, you know, there are plenty of cases that have been brought against different organizations that are represented. So like, it's not without, you know, so it might not be going 90 miles an hour on Route 2, but it's like 75, and like, the right police officer on the right day, and you're going to get a ticket. At least that's my read on it. Again, it's like.
I'd also say that, I mean, 13 years ago, I think it was a bigger deal 13 years ago. But right now, in my experience on the committee, if I was in Shirley and not on the committee, and there were six people from Heir, I probably wouldn't even care. I've never seen anybody on this board make a decision based on what side of the national river the kid lives on. It just happened to happen. Everybody's been advocates for every kid that's in the district. So I know we have statutory requirements, but I think the net effect of the farm operations is minimal at best.
Bring your question to Michelle. If you take forward to DESI, which will have the, just that one change to the 10 years, you have to comply with everything. That's when they will slow you down from 75 or 59 to 45, 55.
Okay.
They will look at everything if you ask for just one small change.
So we've asked for a few changes. That's not, doesn't matter, but there are a few things we asked to change. But are you saying that with that ask, they're going to look at our population? Would they look at it?
Yes, that's what they've done. All the experiences that we've had, people have tried to just change a little thing, and they come back and say, well, what about this?
Okay, all right, that's good to know. Thank you. That's good to know. Kevin, did you have something I didn't know? Erica?
I would say, you know, based upon just that recommendation, and also to Jim's point, I think it would be best for us to move forward with making this happen, especially since, like Jim said, we all are looking for all of the kids to achieve, number one. So we want to be unified, and then also, we want to be compliant. So I think that this has been the best example. Like, I've been reading this, but just the way that you explained it helped me so much more, and I really, really appreciate you doing that. And, I mean, I know there's other things that we may need to talk about, but I do feel, especially if we're pushing to get the adjustments looked at, knowing that that's going to happen, it would be smarter for us to have our ducks in a row before the state, you know, comes to us, and then we have to make a change that we're already discussing now. Be proactive.
Yeah, and Erica, I mean, from my reading of the regional agreement that's in place.
Yes.
And this, and this is the question that's, I don't know what meeting it got brought up at the beginning of this year, sometime in June. It feels like it is very clear that we need to, like, review our population every five and 10 years, based on the census and estimates. We've done that. We see that we need to comply, and then additionally, in the regional agreement, it says that we need to address that by weighing the votes. That feels pretty straightforward. It feels like where there may be open discussion is when we get into our regional agreement, and do we want, what edits do we want to make and bring to the state? And do we want to make it every 10 years or five years? Do we want to wait, or do we want to add members? But right now, we don't have much of a choice. It's a, we need to, like, this feels pretty cut and dry, and like, I think the, Erica, to your point, like, this is very clear. It's, you know, seems pretty straightforward. And it seems like, Michelle, like, we are probably going to need to have, like, an Excel or Google Sheets where you have each person, and at 1.2 or 1, when we count, it's, we'll add that up for you easily, but that feels like what we do next. I guess, or, actually, here's a question. Does this start next meeting? Does it start this meeting? What would be the way that we?
Does it require a vote, or it's already in your agreement? So I'm curious, logistically, how does that?
I guess I'm kind of concerned about where we're at with this whole submitting the agreement we've already made changes to in 2018 and haven't heard back from, because I'm kind of concerned that we're having ongoing discussions that the state is now going to come back to us on, saying, "You've been in the queue for five years, here's our response." Like, have they reviewed it? Have they put it aside? Like, where is it? And should we be submitting something else that we are going to make further changes to? Like, you know, this thing seems to have been hanging around, and I'm not blaming anyone or throwing anything out there, but I'm just saying, if we've already submitted something for review, are we going to hear back from them, or?
So I don't know that it's been submitted to the state. I don't know that.
Okay.
I have been told it has been submitted to the state. I don't believe that we have anything that says it has been submitted to the state. So what I will do, we have a meeting next week, I will do my best to get in touch with someone at DESI. It's not always the easiest thing, and see if it, A, was submitted, and B, where they are in the process of reviewing if it was. I know that a few school committee members, most of you, have said that it has been submitted, but I don't have any evidence from any type of paperwork in the superintendent's office that that actually took place.
Okay, well, it makes sense if it wasn't, because it's been five years, and we haven't heard back, so I would hope that the state's not that slow. So maybe it was never submitted, and actually, that wouldn't be a bad thing, because now we can, you know, really look. because now we can, you know, really look at everything.
The other part, and I don't know this, and maybe I should know this already, but I don't know if the superintendent submits or the chair of the school committee submits that information. Or if it doesn't matter, but I will.
I thought Attorney Breznerhan was doing that.
I thought he did too.
Yeah.
So he, I think we would need to call Attorney Breznerhan. Because I feel like.
That part got stuck.
I feel like he looked at it and I feel like he was the one that was going to send it to DESI.
I feel like that was.
I think that would be the only piece of information, though, that wouldn't be submitted directly from us. I can't think of anything else. Can you think of anything? That our general counsel would submit to the state for us. We would do it, which is another reason why.
The question from Mac.
I don't know. And I actually would lean towards saying that this was never given to the state.
Yeah.
I think you could certainly do it. We do it all the time on behalf of the school districts or on the school committee. I talk with Department of Education Chris Lynch and Michelle Griffin all the time and on behalf of some of the school districts. So I don't think there's any requirement that a school committee. I mean, I know there is no requirement that a school committee member would have to do that. So I think someone in the administration could do that.
Okay. Erica?
I will have that information by, next one second.
Okay, thanks.
Mac, I have a question for you. And I'm just throwing it out there. In the event that the adjustments were submitted to the state back in 2018, is, my question comes down to, do we need to stick with those changes that were submitted? Let's say, once it gets to the state? Or are we able to resubmit with any changes that we have now? Because my concern is, we know the changes that were made in 2018. Do we need to stick to those? Or is it one of those things where we stay in the pipeline even if we have some changes? How does that work?
No, you can, you can start over. Whether it's been submitted or not, the bottom line is, you, when you eventually vote on something and send it to the two towns select boards, that's.
That's when it's final.
That's when it becomes unsemened. Right now, it's not there. So you're welcome to make changes.
Look, I was saying, I think, Chris, you mentioned this. One thing that came up is we're, we met with Mac earlier. It is up to us, you know, right now, we still have, and I think, federal census, two years and then estimates. There were some inconsistencies in the federal census that we had to go back and look at. Whereas our local town clerks, for the regional local assessment, you pick up the phone and they have it. So I do think if it comes back to us, that's one question that we set is, you know, it is up to us. I believe that Mac said we can choose to use the local census or federal. And certainly, the local census is much easier to. Access and find information and have a discussion. So things like that we could review.
And Mac, is that typically what you see in regional agreements? Is it, do you, is there like an overwhelming that people use federal? Or do they use their town?
Almost everybody uses a federal. And the differences are whether they use the local in between or, I guess that's it. But almost everybody uses a federal census.
Okay. And just for my knowledge, how often do you see, if you even know the answer to this? How often are weighted votes? Is it prevalent that regional school committees are using weighted votes or?
I probably shouldn't throw out a percentage, but I'm guessing that 75 or 80% of those regional agreements that have been redone in the last five, eight years have gone to weighted votes.
Weighted votes, okay.
So you go end up with 15 people under.
Many of the regional agreements were written back in the 50s. And people said, wow, we've got about the same number of people in each of these towns. We'll just have three people in each town represent them. It just went on and on until recent years, when people started looking at some of the other issues. So it's, 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 that's pretty prevalent now.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for me?
I mean, I guess just like coming back to the, like, operationally, what we. So we know that there's things that we will just generally want to revisit with our regional agreement. And I think this is one of them in deciding, do we only do it every 10 years? And if we want to do every, actually do it every five years, what we use in between? But for today, we are now, have completed the work we said we would do every five years, about seven years later. I'm presuming we don't want to wait another three to seven years before we actually implement. So should we, do we vote on, you know, our 1.2 votes for AIR, one vote for Shirley? Or is it just like, no, like, this is what it is? And that, like, operationally, how do we implement, like, this? Because it seems pretty cut and dry that from our regional agreement, we need to do this. So what's the next step?
I suggested it was that the committee would vote to make that change. I don't think the rules actually spell that out. But it seemed to make sense that you would, so everybody would know that you agreed to that.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Yeah. Well, I want to thank you. It's good to know we have a resource at the Regional School Association of Regionals, or wherever.
Massachusetts Association.
I didn't realize you were there, but it's good to know that we, we have a connection there. So I appreciate the work you did and the presentation.
I'd just like to mention that I had several meetings with Superintendent Rida and Bill. Bill, whom I've known for 15 years, a guest or so, which were really helpful to get. And then I bothered Michelle with many emails with questions and things asking her. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Good to see you. So I'll ask the board, do you want to vote this evening?
Let's do it.
As I said, I'm fine with doing it. But I think on stuff like this where the representation of the towns changes, I think we should just send a note to the selectmen so they have, like, kind of like a heads up. They may get, they may get some noise, you know. So I think they should probably get a change to understand what we're doing, understand why we're doing it, and then weigh in if they have any thoughts, concerns, or anything. So I think, for right now, just keep doing what we're doing. And to keep that from the majority of the selectmen, that's not really anything to check them to attend to enroll with it.
Well, I get that. I think maybe a letter explaining why we changed it, but not telling them that there's.
We're not asking permission.
Yeah, it's not a permission.
This is school committee business. It's in the regional agreement. I definitely think we should inform. Absolutely.
Can we inform that we plan to bring it to a vote next meeting? And I mean, I'm kind of, I was going to.
Well, we, and you're going to hear this, you were going to hear this a little bit later on, but we have a Ivy phone call with Robert tomorrow about scheduling a meeting with the AIR school committee members to talk about the SOI. I also have a tentative meeting possibly with Mr. McGovern, with Mike, on Friday, as soon as that is confirmed. The Shirley School Committee members will get an invitation to that. We could certainly bring it up then.
And then, does everyone want to do that and then vote on it on our next meeting? Or do you want to, I mean, I'll proceed however you guys want to.
I'm fine. I mean, theoretically, it should have happened before I joined this committee. So I'm like, whatever we do. I mean, I don't know if Joyce wants to be there. If you want to have, I mean, I'm assuming, because again, it's in our regional agreement, it seems pretty cut and dry, I would assume it will be a unanimous vote. So having six folks there or five folks won't, shouldn't make much of a difference. But, I mean, it feels relatively procedural at this point.
We will reach out to Joyce and fill her in on this. And if she does want to be remote next week, we will certainly set her up for that. I don't know that she would be up for it, but.
Yeah, that's a good point. Maybe we should do that then. I mean, I do think you're right with, you know, something like this, with the full board should vote on it. Poor Joyce won't be back in our meetings for a little while, though. So, but yes, I, why don't we plan to put it on the next agenda for a vote unless we find out that those conversations haven't been able to happen in that short turnaround? Because we meet next, next week, right? Yeah.
Or we can put it on tentatively. And then depending if those conversations can't happen, which I'm hoping they can. Because I would, would like to get the SOI on next week's, if possible.
Okay, is everyone good with that? Okay, good. All right, so we're going to move on to public comment. If anyone had the patience to stay with us this long. Just you? All right. Seeing there's no comments in the room, we're going to move on, or public, I mean. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Tonight is going to include, give me a second, the minutes from February 15th, 2023 regular session and a warrant memo, which is dated March 7th, 2023. Accounts payable warrant 1119 dated February 17th, 2023 for $2,234.03. Accounts payable warrant 1120 dated February 17th, 2023 for $562,273.86. Payroll warrant 18 dated February 24th, 2023 for $1,024,547. Payroll warrant 18.1 dated February 24th, 2023 for $2,991.05. And payroll warrant 11, oh, 18.2 dated February 24th, 2023 for $2,656.98. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Payroll number 18, I think that's a mistake, the $1,024,000.
Yep.
I looked up the reports while we were talking and I have a gross pay for that payroll of $835,000. 836, I'm sorry, $835,836.09. So I would ask to remove number 18 and bring it forward on the next one, we can confirm.
Okay. All right, so with that amendment that Mr. Plunkett just said, removing payroll warrant 18, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the consent agenda with the given amendment be brought to a vote.
Be approved.
Be approved, thank you.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any other further discussion, Jim?
I'll put forward my clarification on the meeting minutes on page 11.
I'm at page eight. Okay, yep.
On the, the next to last paragraph, when I was speaking, it was above in the middle of the paragraph, it says net zero by 2050 for buildings like, and I'd like you to read, an elementary school, not a middle school, to achieve net zero, you rely on the technology and building techniques that no longer exist, but currently do not exist. And that's all.
Okay, and you have anything else? So should we do a new motion to reflect that addendum?
I can do that.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the, with two amendments. First, the warrant 18 and also with Jim Quinte's changes in the meeting minutes. To be approved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to new business. First item is the certification of the fiscal year '24 budget. Mr. Plunkett.
Madam Chair. Go to the podium.
Okay.
I thought it was the only one.
Please put the presentation up, Bill.
Do you have the slides?
Yeah.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah. Sorry, I turned it off. It's warming up.
There we go. All right. Okay, so I put together a few slides for this certification. I prepared this on Friday. And then Friday afternoon, we had our E and D certified. So I want to go over that after this presentation, just to show you how we made up with our estimates and the budget, the assessment to the towns. So the first slide here is the budget timeline. Here we are, March 7th, certification by the Regional School Committee. And then we go into the town meetings, April 24th for AIR and May 9th for Shirley. So we're getting down there. The assessment history over the past few years, we've gone from 3.3 up to 3.75 and then kind of averaging about the same. Low 3 is 2.6 is what we're coming in, propose this year. $529,000 increase on the operating assessment. This is our foundation budget. These numbers did come out. Governor Healy's team put together the preliminary foundation and chapter 70 numbers. Our foundation budget came in at $13,504 to educate one student. They take that amount and they multiply it by the number of our foundation enrollment, which is 1712, and get the total foundation budget. Our estimate came in at $13,260. So we're only about $250 off of that foundation budget for our estimate. So that's, it's in pretty good shape. For the next slide, we have the allocations to AIR and Shirley. FY '23, we had 1,658 foundation enrollment students. And this year, we have 1,712, an increase of 54. You can see that most of that was with Shirley. They added an increase of 42 students in their foundation enrollment. And AIR had 12. If you go across the columns, you can see that the increase to both towns in total is $726,000, with 409,000 increase to AIR and 317,000 to Shirley. We were also very close to this. You can see our, the FY '24 required local contribution total is $14,814,575. And we came in, our estimate was $14,721,861. So we were only $92,000 off, 0.6%.
Bill, just a, just a.
Slide, our chapter, oh.
Just a note for you, in the deck that was saved, page four, the foundation budget, it's just, it's not legible in the deck that I have.
You can't look?
No, yeah, it's really fuzzy.
Yeah. So just if you're sending that out to the select board or anything, I can't read page four. So I just.
I don't know if it's, are these taken right off of the webpage or something?
It's a workbook.
Yeah, because it's really hard to read on the slide.
It's hard to read on the slide?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
You know what I think happened? I think, Mr. Plunkett, you were working in PowerPoint. And then we uploaded this into Google and sometimes.
Changed the format?
Sometimes, yeah. Thank you for.
It's all blurred together, so you can't really read it.
Yes, from PowerPoint to Google Slides.
We can, we can fix that.
So if you look at the slides, these are PowerPoint here. Bear with me.
You can see that.
So we're back to the chapter 70 summary, which shows the graphs of the aid. One more, I believe, there we go. So on the left-hand side, you can see where we were last year at the top of that column. Last year, chapter 70 was $8,450,171. So they take the foundation budget in row two, subtract the required local contribution that they just calculated, and the difference is what the foundation aid should be. So the foundation aid should be 8.3 million. Last year, we got 8.4. So they're not going to take anything away from us and we're whole harmless at the minimum aid of $30 per student. So we got an additional $51,000 in chapter 70. When I was doing my preliminary budget model, I brought our chapter 70 over at 84 even from last year. So that ended up helping us with our assessments by going to the 8, 8.5 million on the chapter 70. You can see that graph, probably not too good on the Google slides, but. but wholly pretty steady, a little bit of an increase over the last couple of years. Trying to make up some of the health insurance and other category that they haven't funded 100%. So after this, we have our totals page for the budget. And the total operating budget, which includes the debt, is $31,892,566, the top of that, the bottom of that first section. And that total of all funds would be $35,202,74. And as it relates to the assessment, there's no change to the assessment. From where we were when presented to FITCOMs and boards of selection, you see we have a 2.6% increase to the operating assessment, 2.6 to Air and 2.5 to Shirley. We then add in the debt for the high school rental and field project, and the percentages go up to 3.9% increase overall, and 3.2% for Air and 4.8% for Shirley. And Air is a little bit reduced with the debt because of the use of the CPA money. There'd be two, two years with a $150,000 credit for the Air taxpayers. So that was the end of the slides we put together for the budget proposal before we got certified. So in your budget packet, we have the memo regarding the E and D transfers. Our E and D was certified on Friday afternoon by Department of Revenue at 1.2 million. It's actually 1.1,210,220. That's up about 110,000, 115,000 from last year. And I would propose that we transfer $300,000 from E and D in the FY '24 budget to replenish the capital stabilization fund, which you can see the balance there. We have, this year, we have designated 300,000 from capital stabilization for the field project. It was part of our budget, so we're gonna be moving that out. We also moved in 200,000 from last year's budget. So if we have a $300,000 transfer from E and D next year in our FY '24 budget, the balance in capital stabilization will be 910,620. And that's capped at 5% of our operating budget, so we still have a little bit of wiggle room there with that, with that, with that balance. So, cash, spent reserve is another one of the other funds. We, we transferred $40,000 last year in this year's budget. And that's remaining, we haven't spent anything out of that. That remains at $400,504. So I would ask that you propose, or propose that you certify the budget at the new amount. Even though the assessment has not changed to the towns, the overall total, it's changed by the 300,000. So the total budget for all funds would be $35,502,74.
Do we have language, like, that you want us to use to approve it? Or is it just a matter of approving the fiscal year '24 budget at 35 million? Like, can I just say that?
Yeah, last year, we did the total of all funds, so it would be the $35,502,74.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Bill before we move on?
No.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year '24 ASRSD budget at $35,500, no, $502,74. So you have to say so moved.
Sure, so moved.
And someone says second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Good?
Thank you.
Yes. All right, so second is draft of the 2023-2024 school year, but I think I saw somewhere that that wasn't gonna happen?
Well, no, and it's, it's really in the superintendent's report. So the Department of Education has not released next year's MCATs window.
Okay.
So we were not able to put that in the budget. But we do have a list of some of the updates that we could go over tonight. So we are still waiting for the MCAT dates. However, we do have the important anticipated dates to share with you tonight. So the extended school year and power-up programs will run Monday through Thursday from 8:30 to 11:00, beginning Monday, July 10th until Friday, August 4th. Monday, August 28th, the anticipated convocation of all staff, we'll report for PD. On Tuesday, August 29th, this is anticipated, all staff will report to buildings. Wednesday, August 30th, the anticipated first day of school for grades 1 through 12. Tuesday, September 5th would be the anticipated first day of school for kindergarten. Monday, September 11th would be the anticipated first day of school for preschool. And Friday, May 24th, anticipated last day for seniors. Friday, June 7th is the anticipated class of 2024 graduation. And Tuesday, June 11th would be the anticipated last day of school. And there will be no school, uh, snow days next year, so that will absolutely happen.
Those poor seniors.
And we have the calendar, we have one date approaching still in this year. We have, at least taking for the, I think it's the school committee meeting on Tuesday, May 2nd. That's also local election day. So I think we might want to entertain a meeting to Wednesday, the 3rd. And then on, when we do next year's schedule, the, the state elections are Tuesday, November 7th. So we might wanna consider, will we have the Wednesday, November 5th?
Can we make sure those are not school committee dates next year? Thank you. How about March? Do we wanna have a week in between if this happens? If this happens again, back-to-back? And the only reason I, I mention it is we're gonna have a very short meeting next week. There won't be much on the agenda. Not that that is, that is bad, but, but sometimes when we have these back-to-back meetings, there are things that end up having to wait longer than, than we may want them to.
So what I would just propose is if, maybe like, put a tentative calendar together of what it looks like, to see if it's even an issue?
We can give you two different, one with the not having back-to-back meetings and one with having.
Yeah, well, no, I'm just saying, like, if you were to look through, maybe though, it won't even.
It might not happen next year, but that is true.
Sorry.
We'll let you know, though.
I'll be fine, either way.
The other thing that's not on here is, I think, this year, when we approved the calendar, I was not cognizant of like, when are vac, like, when are holidays? When are the PD days? And I know there was a few, or at least one week this fall where I got questions like, why do we have a PD day? A holiday, like, a, and then like, maybe there was another, for some reason, there was like, two and a half days of school that kids were going, and parents were like, Monday, they weren't going, they were in there Tuesday, they were half-day Wednesday, off Fri, like, it'd be helpful to look at just like, the whole calendar, I think, as we, for both the school committee meetings, federal holidays. Like, I know there's a lot of different things we're juggling, but that's the other thing that I know was, again, I can't remember what week it was.
It might have been that week in November where we have that PD day, and then there's a holiday. Like, it's a long weekend, and then we have a district-wide with other districts. I feel like that week was.
It's usually goes along with Super Tuesday.
Yeah, I feel like it was.
Cuz there's, that Monday, is that Monday? And a worthy day is the PD day.
It's also, I think, that's some of the conference days that happen too.
Yeah.
Which only impacts one section of the district at a time.
One of the other changes that you're probably going to see is we have been having half-days for quite a while in ASRSD, when we, we probably shouldn't have been. So a school day is a school day when you serve lunch in school. So we've been having half-days for a while, I think since we regionalized, in not necessarily serving lunch. We started to give bag lunches last year as a kind of, an attempt at compliance with this. It is not. You can't give bag lunches, they have to eat the lunch in school. So to be in compliance next year, we're going to go to 90-minute early releases instead of, instead of half-days. The cafeteria crew, the food service crew is fantastic, and they made the bag lunches this year for us. But it is a tremendous amount of work in an already shortened day to get that done. So we are up for a review, either next year or the year after. And we will, we've already been told not to do this, so we, we need to stop.
What, like, can, do you have an example? Like, why were we, what were we using those half-days for?
Well, they were used for very legitimate reasons. So we'd have a half-day for parent conferences.
Okay.
We would give, the, the teachers would, we would have a half-day before they started, it would give teachers time to prepare. And then we would actually have conferences the second half-day, where parents would be able to come in in the afternoon.
Okay.
Instead of having to come at night. The, the, the two hours at night is not enough time to see every, every child's parent. So we, we have some ways, we think we can make that work with the 90-minute early release. We still have to meet with ASRIA to discuss that. Might, it probably won't be a huge issue. We're gonna find a way to get them that time, or some, or a lot of that time back. But we just can't, we can't have the, the half-days anymore.
And what's the difference, the length of the day difference between a half-day and 90-minute early release?
So a half-day's three hours.
Okay.
And the 90-minute earlier's at least is 90 minutes. So it's, it's an hour and a half, it's about twice, twice as long.
Oh, so it adds an hour and a half to the day?
On a, on a half-day, yeah. So the half-day, we're cutting the day by three hours. And a 90-minute early release, it's an hour and a half.
You're right.
I never remember when I need to pack my kids' lunch either way, so I will appreciate just knowing that I need to do it no matter what.
What's that, school day, six hours? Just, just work with me tonight, I'm a little slow. All right, everyone, good?
Yeah.
Okay, so, go, no.
Are we going through the rest of the updates?
It's, it's the next, next thing on the agenda, I believe, so we're happy to, to finish that up.
Yeah.
Mr. Christie will be coming to the next school committee meeting to talk about some of the benefits of the rotating schedule, and also talk about how dual enrollment can still happen. With that, Mr. Quinte had reached out and asked that question. And I, I figured I would go right to the source and, and have Mr. Christie come in to answer that. I do have a sports update for you, but I'm hoping that we have a live update for the girls' basketball game? No?
It's not, good news.
No?
They lost 62-47, but it was very close up until the last two minutes. Sorry if I've been checking my phone on occasion. My niece is on the team.
Oh. They had a great season.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
Yeah, they had a great game last, was it last Friday?
Yeah.
They played, they, they were, I mean, they were up by 25 going into the fourth quarter or something, fourth period. Quarter, yeah, yeah, quarter basketball. All right, so I do have a sports update. This was submitted by Mr. Kendall. Air Shirley teams enjoyed a fantastic winter season with seven out of our eight teams competitive in reaching the state playoffs and four winning league titles. Girl swim capped off an unbeaten season with another mid-watch title, with senior captain Sierra Quinte, senior Lily Bluen, and sophomore Gracie Hans all qualifying for the state meet at MIT. The boys' team qualified for sectionals. In all, 10 Air Shirley students participated in swimming with Bromfield. Sophomore Cali, Karli Iwa has been one of the top players for the Lummister Girls Hockey Co-op, which had its best season ever and qualified for the MIAA State Tournament. Fellow sophomore Bella LeBlanc has also contributed to the team's success. The Lunenburg Air Shirley JV Boys Hockey Team finished first in its league with 10 Air Shirley students. Boys Basketball finished second in the league and qualified for the state tournament. They won their opening game and reached the round of 32. Girls Basketball has reached the Sweet 16 of the MIAA Division V State Tournament and are also co-league champions. They are at Westport tonight, or they were at Westport tonight to face the Wildcats at 6:00 PM. Both boys and girls track teams won league championships, and both were undefeated in dual meets. So congratulations to all our winter athletes.
So impressive.
Yeah. There are no new college acceptances to share tonight.
That doesn't mean there hasn't been, they just haven't been reported.
They, they need to get that into the school counseling department and get on this list.
I don't know if I saw Clark.
Oh my God, we need to tell Anna she needs to get her schools in.
We said that the state swim meet at MIT was a terrific event, and, and RAB, Mr. Kendall was there. The girls were very happy to see him there, but he had a much bigger effect on the Bromfield ball. Girls that could not believe that the athletic director went to the swim meet. They were like, our goals were like, oh, yeah, that would happen. And we're like, that wouldn't happen here. And we were very, we had a great time with Mr. Kendall at MIT. I wanted to tell you that.
We're lucky to have Mr. Kendall. He's been everywhere, and, you know, especially what he had to deal with this winter with, you know, the gym and moving everything, and I'm sure it was a lot of work for him. And he showed up for our students all the time, so that's great. Jim, is 10 swimmers a lot? Or is that typical for Air Shirley? 10 swimmers, is that typical? Or is that a lot?
We, well, we've had that and more. And I think we, for four years in a row, the captains been from Air Shirley. Till this year, they decided to add a captain from each of the towns just to take the heat down.
And is it three schools?
Littleton is also.
Okay, so Littleton, Bromfield, and us?
And us.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's great that we have these opportunities for co-ops, like for swimming and girls' hockey and boys' hockey, you know, to give those kids a chance to play that they might not have had if we didn't have those opportunities. So it's really good to see lots of kids being, taking part in it. All right, so if that's it for your report, no one has any questions, I'm gonna move on to ongoing business, which tonight has the regional agreement on it.
So I had met with Mr. Quinte last week about, about this agenda item, specifically with the elementary schools. And I believe, Mr. Quinte, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is basically speaking about the part of the regional agreement where we are, each town, and currently what we have in the regional agreement, each town will have an elementary school.
The number, the reason I brought it up is that it occurred to me yesterday, the people, when we finally come up with a finished product, and we'll be in front of our own town trying to do it, and the makeup of the committee at that time will be three of the people who are, who must we can talk, Michelle and Miss Thing for no return. There'll only be two people on the committee, Joyce and myself, that have been a part of whatever these changes were. You know, and if you weren't on the committee before, I think there would be no reason to even read this document. And now, so what I wanted to do just tonight, and it's just disgusting, is to go over some of the conversation. Michelle would be a part of it. On the things that would, some of the stuff was just boilerplate changes, and some of the stuff were functional. So the discussions that came up. The first one, well, actually, this is a netted, like, the, currently it says the agreement between the towns and Air and Shirley with respect to the formation of regional agreement. I think we should change formation to operation. Because we've been formed for 13 years. So I think that, as we've come up with other things that we might wanna move around and change, would be one of the things that we want to consider. And as I went through the rest of the document, and I know you've probably already now that you went through it, the first thing that came up is elementary schools, which is section two. And at the time, when it just was formed, it said it was gonna be an elementary school in each one of the towns. And if I remember the discussion, right, this is the committee. We, as we understand how the MSBA works when you go to replace a school, they, obviously, they're trying to save money. And they want me to look at the possibility of combining the way you, where you could combine. And the thought of the committee was, at the time, was like, if we change this, it will be fast. If we leave it the way it is, then it would put the MSBA in a position that, well, you should go back to look at putting a combined elementary school in. And we would say, well, our agreement doesn't allow that, so we can't look at it. And they said, well, you should really reconsider that alignment. What we wanted to do is to screen light it, just to say that, look, the school committee can look at anything they want to look at. And then, then they talked to the towns to find out what you're really gonna have to waste. But the other thing the MSBA wants is to make sure that you can actually do it. Right, so I, all we. all we, all I wanted to do, and I think the thoughts of the committee at the time was that we're just trying to shorten the process. If we get in a situation where we have to do an elementary school, like we are now, we want to shorten the process. So, if we say, hey, we looked at it, and we took a look at the towns, and not both towns are ready, so we can just sort of move forward. That sort of thing. So, I, I think it, I think the committee at that time really looked at this production. That, that's one of the things that would garner some discussion as we get to the town board, we go over the changes. A lot of the other stuff, as you go through the document here, you'll see are associated with, you know, how everyone's gonna be assessed, like, for years one through six. Because when, when we formed the district, the percent of the budget above the required local contribution was air was much higher than Shirley. So, there was a, a five-year transition. We were held harness for a year. And then, there was a five-year transition where we had to come up with a million and a half dollars over five-years to get to the same level as what air was spending. You know, now that, all that stuff in the agreement doesn't mean anything anymore because that ended the year six and now we're at year twelve. And you'll find as you go through the document, there are a number of things that deal with just that. So, they're just basically boilerplate changes. You can read them if you want to, but I'm not gonna go over. The next thing that garnered discussion was section 10, which is the debt exclusion. We have, I have a video. Michelle?
You ready for that? Mr. Quinty, you ready for the, you want the video now?
Yeah. You're not losing any control. You're getting two or three shots at a budget. If you don't like it when it comes to town meeting, just like, just like it is today.
This is from the air town meeting that we just were before.
I, I have the video up. It's only playing on my, let me see if I can.
You're not, you're not losing any control. You're getting two or three shots at a budget. If you don't like it when it comes to town meeting, just like, just like it is today, you vote it down. Hopefully, that won't be the case. The regional school committee will be three fiscally responsible people, which is all you need to look at when you go to the polls. You put it, you put these people in office and they're there to look out for your best interest. Major capital approval for major capital expenses, like the building renovation, the regional school committee is gonna submit a request for capital to each town, which more than likely would be debt exclusions, which goes on your tax rate for 20-years. After it's paid off, it's gone away. So, your taxes are only, not gonna go up forever, but they will go up for that period of time. If either town were to go no, then it goes back to the regional school committee. And we'll, we'll go back to, if it, if it's disapproved, then the school committee's gonna have to do whatever it has to come up with to try and make, try and make the town meetings something that's palatable to them. I guess is the only way I can, I can put it to you. And I think now we're going back to...
Could you hear that?
Yeah.
So, that presentation...
You're not, you're not losing...
That presentation is exactly one that was done at Shirley and it was done at all the forums, quite the people that were on the committee. And if you take a look at, although, if you take a look at what we've done, effectively, that's exactly what we've done. But it's only happened because the school committee has made a provision that the towns are allowed a debt exclusion vote. Bill, can you go over what currently section 10 means with regards to chapter 71, section 16?
Well, I could tell you that for both the high school renno, ad renno, and the field project, we, we went to the debt exclusion elections in the towns. As far as the regional agreement, the language that was in there was, this committee could use either section D or N. D, there would be a town, a town meeting may be held by the towns and they could, they could voice their disapproval. They may not even schedule a town meeting if, depending on what the will of the community is. But we've gone with, with section N both times, which is going directly to the election, the town elections in both towns. In 2012, we had elections both in air and Shirley. It cost about 10-grand for those two elections. And then, in 2018, we had an election in Shirley. It cost $2,800. That must have been the field project for a subsequent vote, I believe. But those are the three elections that we've had. We, we, the district pays for it according to this section. And the committee always has the authority to choose section N no matter what the issuance of the debt is for. If it's, you know, a smaller project, they could still go to subsection N, chapter 71.
So, so really, the only thing I think is that at the, at the presentations that were made to the people that formed the district, it was clearly explained that the school committee comes up with a project. We present it to both towns. Both towns get to review it. If they both accept it by whatever terms they want, it comes back to us. They would just do it. If one town, for whatever reason, wants it amended, wants something changed, then it goes back to the school committee to make changes. So, what I'd like to do is to do what the, what the presentation says. It says that we will follow chapter 71, section 16, subsection D, which is what was presented. And, and actually, if you take a look at the nuts and bolts of how that would happen, that's exactly what happened with the two major debt exclusions that we had. Everybody got a chance to do it, but it required the school committee to make an amendment or to add to our motion for the projects that the towns would be allowed a debt exclusion. Technically, that was not required. We could have just had the overall election and then we could have sent the bill for the project to the town. And then, the town would have the, the, have a decision to make on how they want it.
The latter that you just said is what we did.
What's that?
We had the overall elections.
Right.
And then, it had to go to towns for how they wanted to pay for it, whether through debt exclusion or not. So, it's the latter that we did. It's passed because we sent it to a ballot vote. And then, it's up to the towns how they're gonna pay for the debt.
Except that we, we put a provision, we added a provision that we would not pass on if, you know, the towns passed debt exclusion votes. We added that as required.
Which we didn't have.
What is your proposal, then? What would we be changing?
That we just say, that we get rid of that extra election that we caused. Right now, we have an election, an eight-hour election for a capital project. It's a joint capital project between the towns of Air and Shirley. So, what I say is, look, we'll come up with a capital project. We'll send it to the towns. And they can do what they, they can either accept it or reject it, or, you know, they can, they can do what they want. We'll have to make our modifications. We have to work within the towns. And if it goes to, you know, if they decide they're gonna go to a town meeting and they're gonna need a debt exclusion to pay for it, then that's what they do. But, you know, we may have a smaller project where they may take a look at it and say, you know, we're not gonna need a debt exclusion vote. We're gonna be able to post upon and do it according to these needs.
If we were to do that, if it's passed, then, so one thing, you say the towns accept it or reject it.
Right.
It continues to be accepted or rejected through a ballot vote.
No.
Then what are you proposing?
We would send it to the town. They, they get to review the, say, we'd send it to probably like the board of selectmen. That's where they would go.
For a school project?
Right. The request for a school project, we would, we would send our project, and I'm sure, you know, at that point, we'd all be there and the administration would be there. And it would be an entire presentation that we would put to the, to the people in, to the board of selectmen in Air and Shirley. Just for an example, suppose we find out that we have a ton of middle-school people and Dr. Renner says, hey, you're gonna need a wing. You don't have enough people in that building. We're gonna have to build a wing. So, then, we would put a proposal based on his projections and where we're going in population, students, and all that sort of stuff. Said, look, we need a capital project to add a wing to the middle-school. So, they would do the presentation to air and presentation to Shirley. And the selectmen would go like, yeah, that looks like everything's okay. And then, they would go to the special town meeting or annual town meeting, and they would, we'd do the presentation there. And then, if they felt they needed a debt exclusion vote, they could call for a debt exclusion vote. If they didn't want to have a debt exclusion vote, they wouldn't have to.
And you're, and you would choose to leave that up to the selectmen?
To do what?
Any of the school projects that we want to pass, including new elementary schools?
To, the selectmen, the selectmen don't decide. It goes, the selectmen would take a look at, you know, the scope of the project and say, alright, for, we understand what you're saying. And we understand that there's a need for this. So, we're gonna go to the citizens of our town. And I'm sure we'll be doing the same presentation again. And then, they'll get to decide whether we should, what, how they would pay for the project if it, if it passes.
I don't think you're getting my question.
I don't.
I don't know if anybody else is confused. Let's use an elementary school as an example.
Right.
So, going through when we passed either the fields or this new renovated school, under the, under the process that we have today, we went to a ballot vote.
Right.
To pass those.
Right.
And then, once it was approved by ballot vote in each town, it went to each town meeting for how they were going to pay for it.
We, because we, the school committee added a requirement for the towns to be able to do that. But we could have, once we had the ballot vote, we could have said, Bill Barlow, we had a bar attorney here that said...
That I agree with. So, in other words, once it's passed, it's moving forward. However, the town chooses to pay for it, it's up to them, but it's not a vote. It's, it's happening no matter what. The towns just have to figure out how they want to pay for it. I think that's the amendment that was put in, right? Michelle?
No, what was put, yeah. Well, what we put in when we voted for, say, the fields, was that we, we said, we're gonna have it, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but each, we're gonna have a ballot vote, but we won't move forward until both towns approve the debt exclusion on it.
Right.
So, we had a passed project, but we also had requirements that we imposed in our vote that had to, we had to meet. And that was that each town would pass a debt exclusion to fund it. We didn't have to do that.
Right.
We chose to do that.
Right.
So, Jim, are you proposing removing that debt exclusion as a requirement? I'm just trying to make sure I understand what it is you're proposing.
He's proposing that additional, that, that we wouldn't be able to have the overall vote that would pass the project. That that would no longer be an option, that each town would have to...
Approve both at the same time?
Well, they, they would have to approve it. So, you wouldn't have the option to have a, an overall vote. See, this, this language, I, I'm not comfortable with, with making decisions on section D and section N without having, because when we had our legal counsel here, it was very clear that he said to us, you want to have options. You don't want to pigeonhole yourselves because you don't know the situation, whatever. He very clearly said, you keep your options open, which is why five of us agreed that we were gonna keep the language the way it was. So, adding things we've seen, how hard it gets when you add requirements. So, that's why that wasn't done in 2018. But I'm not comfortable having conversation about switching things without having legal representation tell us exactly what those mechanisms are.
100%.
In those mass general law sections. Because I think everyone needs to really understand what one section means for a capital project as opposed to the other. That's my personal feeling.
So, I understand everything you said. The reason that I asked to put this on the agenda because at some point, we're going to, we're gonna be back in front of the towns with this agreement. And everybody has to, we, we may agree, may not agree on certain things. That's okay. But the only thing that's critical, everybody has to understand exactly what it means. And we're not gonna be able to do that tonight. And I'm not expecting anybody to do anything than other that ask questions and say, alright, I'm gonna look deeper into that. That's all I'm looking for here.
I would love to see us get a memo from, just for new people and for myself, because it's extremely confusing.
Yeah.
Like, what is the process of funding a project under section 16, chapter 71, subsection D, section 16, or section, subsection N? Like, what's the process? But even just like a question to you guys, like, what, what is the implication to the school district if there's an emergency situation and we need funding? Like, not a capital project, but a, you know, something that's gonna be more than, you know?
More than 2% of our budget.
Yeah, right.
Wanna correct me if I'm wrong, or do you wanna?
Oh, I could take a shot. For a smaller capital project, section D would allow us to go to the selectmen. And then, they would have, they would have the option of calling a town meeting for disapproval. And if they didn't do that, then we would be authorized to go forward with the borrowing. Our current language is 2% of the budget. If it's less than 2% of the budget, you could use section D. So, that would work in, if we had an emergency, that would make it so we could work more quickly probably, unless the town disapproved it. And then, we would be going back to the...
And we have that option today. Like, we can choose which option, whether it be M or D.
We do. But these weren't voted on in 18.
Right.
Right now, it's, it's a markup with it out, but it's still in effect.
Okay.
That's what I mean. On the one that's enforced now, the, you, it only says chapter N. It doesn't say you get to choose either or for large projects. On the one that's currently enforced, if you go to the one that's enforced now, you cannot get to choose between whether you want to use D or N for large projects.
It's been stricken out with the, 2018 markup, it's stricken out.
Right.
But I, I've been, I'm under the impression that that hasn't been passed.
Right.
It hasn't been voted on.
It hasn't been passed. So, right now, it says that if it's less than 2%, you can, you can do D. And if it's greater than that, you do N.
Right.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
That's, there's no, we don't get to decide anything. It just says, there's the number. This is what you do. That's all it says.
Or the committee could go with N, no matter what.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we know why was it stricken out when it was proposed in 2018? To remove D? Remove the option?
It doesn't look like it's removing the option. It's just saying that you can do D or N, and it's not saying the 2% requirement.
The 2% requirement.
Is the thing that looks like it's been stricken, which is saying that the school committee, if there's a majority vote of the school committee, could require us to use, or could ask that we use section N instead of D. So, Bill could have a need for $600,000, which would be less than 2%, just under. But like, we could say, well, we want towns to vote, so we're gonna use N.
Why is there an N for that, but?
What's that? And if we wanted to, if we're like, if we want to bring $600,000 to two-town elections, we could do that, is what those strikes are saying.
And nothing, really, none of this stuff happens in the vast majority. Anytime we're looking for that kind of capital money, I mean, we're talking to the town board ahead of time before it becomes closer. It doesn't do so short of it. So, anyway, my only warning is that everybody needs to get really comfortable with that. So, they understand, and you can be wherever you want on the, on the project, but you have to really dig deep on that particular one to understand. There's a lot involved. There's a lot of moving parts.
What are you proposing if there's any changes to this, Jim? Or you're just saying everybody needs to be familiar with what this is requesting? You feel this should be changed?
For me, the most important thing is that everybody understands this because we're the people that have to stand in front of the, the town to sell it. Because anything we change, when we, when it goes forward, it has to pass in both towns without amendment, or you get nothing, is what happens. Alright, so, so we just have to understand it to the point that we can figure out where we're gonna be. And hopefully, we'll, you know, we'll all be in agreement. I'm proposing that it just be D enough. I'll tell you personally why I feel very strongly about that. I feel very strongly because when we formed the district, this was a major, major consideration. And as you can see from the video, it was made very clear that in effect, it was D. If you take a look at what D says, that's what the people sitting in the chair said. Now, a lot of those people aren't even with us anymore, even the guy that was doing the presentation. And I just, I want to be loyal to what was passed.
Who was that giving the presentation?
Teddy. Teddy Janzkevitz.
Teddy Janskevich.
Okay.
So, and honestly, I don't care how that disconnect happens between that and this document, it doesn't matter to me at all. I just want to be truthful to what was presented to the people, and I trust the people that voted on it. So I would like to see it go to what was on the slide, because that's what was presented when we formed the district.
So, but D would require you to go to towns, whether it be selectmen or a town meeting, as opposed to a ballot?
Yeah.
Then, how could that be good for the school system? What benefit does that provide the school system? I would love to know that.
I don't understand the question.
You got to move around.
Yep.
You'd be removing the option of taking major projects from parents being able to vote on these, and putting it in the hands of a town meeting that has 160 people show up. How is that beneficial to the school system?
Well, I think, well, A, if you take a look at the, at the special town meetings in AIR and Shirley, when there's 160 people there, I don't think I've been to that one, because it's very hard.
How many are there? 400, 400 are there in AIR versus 7,000 people?
For a special town meeting, you probably have nine. I mean, I'm just...
Okay, so great, then you're making my point.
And Shirley, if you break 100, you're going to away, but...
Then how is that good for the school system?
What I'm saying is that if, if we have a, a major project that we want to do, say again, the example, we want to add a wing onto the middle school, if you can't get 50 people to go, it's, it's so easy to put people into a special town meeting and get stuff to happen. That's, that's the, the hard, the hard thing is the debt exclusion logic.
So here, here's my concern with that. Because when you are looking at something like that, that's when we can get into some serious disparities. And this is what I mean by that. Is, when you have a town meeting, I'm going to give an example. I went to town meetings when I became involved in school committee, because there was something important that I needed to go to. And then learned, okay, about everything that goes on in town meetings, right? And then I take that information back to people that I know, who then now just started showing up to town meetings, right? So if it took me, in my experience, to do that, people similar to myself, you know, socioeconomically, maybe it's people who work at night, you never know, you know, just the different mix of people that you come into interaction with, who are trying to be there, if they can't make that town meeting, so that you have the full wide array of people there, or full representation of the community, that's dangerous. And that, that's my concern, is that, okay, let's say we call a special, you know, election, special town meeting, and the people who really want to be there can't be there. That, that's a problem. Just like, prime example, oh my gosh, Mary used to have tea with the superintendent at 10:00 AM. I can't make that as a working parent. However, the people who can make that as, you know, their ideas, their agendas, and I don't mean that in a sinister way, but that is what's pushed forward, or seems important to Mary at that time, for those people who can make that meeting, as opposed to having it at, you know, 6:00 PM, or 7:00 PM, or lunchtime. You see what I'm saying? So the dangerous precedent with that is that you are always going to have a larger chance of having disparities amongst our families within the district on any given...
Of course. I mean, it doesn't give everybody in the town a full day opportunity to vote.
Yeah.
These are held at 8 o'clock on a Tuesday or a Monday night. Go to the demographics of those meetings. Parents aren't there because they have kids they're cooking for, doing homework, bringing to different sporting events. And no way would that be beneficial to a school system. And this at least gives us the option of either. So I just don't understand whatsoever the logic of how that could be beneficial to us.
I understand your argument, but we also have 1,700 students in the district, times, you know, one to parent each. It's a big draw. And I think for any of the special town meetings, it's an exceptionally low bar. It has happened, I don't know, I don't follow the body politic in there very much, but anytime there's been something that's a big project, say for AIR, for Shirley, I'd just say, probably one of the more controversial ones was the, a new library, which isn't something, you know, Shirley would have normally gone, but, you know, you get the bushes and you're like, "We're going to support the library." And all of a sudden, a special town meeting in Shirley might be 70 people, and now there's 170 people, and it's just a slam dunk. And as soon as the vote happens, you know exactly what happens. All those people, 100 people get to leave. Because you borrow...
But you're getting 100 people to vote on something instead of the whole town.
Right.
Was that?
It's still disparity. It's not equitable.
Yes, right.
It's not giving everybody the opportunity to weigh in and vote on these massive projects.
No, but then it goes to, from that meeting, it goes to debt exclusion to pay for the project, where everybody gets to vote on a full project. And on our election, where we do N, it's an eight-hour election.
And now we have, we have the option of either one.
Excuse me. When we have our election, it's an eight-hour election.
Right.
Okay? And then it passes to Fails. Like, so if we made no other provision, we could just send the bill to AIR and Shirley and say, "You go figure out how to fund it." And then, anything can happen from that, right? People can say, "All right, we'll have a debt exclusion," and we won't. But if you decide that you're not having a debt exclusion, I mean, I don't know what the percentage is in there, but in Shirley, we're about 60% of the tax dollars is from the school district. If for some reason a debt exclusion fails, then they have to find that money somewhere else.
So, just, and I have, I feel like I've read Section D and Section N too many times to still not understand them the way I should. If we use the Fields as an example, we use Section D, it went to a town meeting, that town meeting then, like, the town decided to bring it to an election? You're like, misunderstanding.
We didn't bring it to town meeting, right?
It passed to Fails in that town meeting.
We had an election, an overall election.
If we had taken up Section D, that goes to the board of selectmen, and they could call a town meeting.
But it's also up to them if they're going to call a town.
Correct.
Right.
But if they don't, if they don't call a town meeting, then you just go do it.
Okay, so what I would suggest, honestly, what I would suggest is asking council, bond council, whatever council we work with, to do a cheat sheet of, "This is what funding a project looks like if you use Section D, and this is what your steps are if you use subsection N. What is the process?" So that everyone can see what the difference is.
Can, actually, could we even use the elementary schools, since we're literally looking at...
Well, the only, the only problem with that is it's each, it's not a regional. Well, we can say, in a hypothetical scenario, if we were going to do a regional elementary...
Okay, there you go, okay. Use the Fields, here's how we did it, but under, if you're using D, what would the process?
Okay, so yeah, the Fields.
Do you know what I'm saying, do you know what I'm at? Like, just like a layman's thing of what the process is.
Because there is the like, I, you're, yes, within second, yes, the cheat sheet would be helpful, because again, there's the like, there's the flow chart that I can imagine working together, where it's like, if the selectmen say, "Don't bring it to a town meeting," then the school can do it, essentially, if what part of N is. That's why Section D is generally used for a smaller expense.
I agree, under that scenario, I don't know how many select boards are not going to bring something to a town meeting.
Right.
But so now you have town meeting of 90 people, or 150 people deciding major school projects instead of the community.
Well, and you have to also keep in mind that when you have a town meeting, you have it in a, in a facility that's limited in seating. So even if you wanted to have 1,000 people show up to your town meeting, our auditorium seats 500.
And, and I don't like the idea of having to campaign an idea one way or the other, because then it comes down to how many people can you fit in that room that agree with you? That's where I'm having a hard time with it, because then, are we having proper representation of, or what I want to say, an objective, factual representation of whatever it is we're trying to do if we go, if we move to something like that? Where now we're talking about having the most interested party in the room, as opposed to having everyone.
And if we use the Fields as an example, only after multiple votes of getting our parents involved and out, and the community involved, when it was going to initially the finance committee of Shirley, the board of selectmen, and other town leaders, no way is that going to pass in Shirley Town Meeting. It's when it goes to the community that our school projects get passed.
Except it to pass a town meeting.
The one thing I will say, you know, just with the clip, I'm uncomfortable relying on just that one clip to change our regional agreement, to reflect something that was said at a special town meeting, when I don't have any, like, I don't know, I don't know what was said at the Shirley Town Meeting, if it was the exact same presentation. I don't know the timeline of when this agreement was actually put in front of people that showed that there was two options. And, and it's very easy to kind of rattle through the process during a presentation. I mean, clearly, he did not go through the general laws and chapter, you know, so I get that, why we saw the video, but I'm uncomfortable relying on that as being the basis of, "This is what the community was told," because it's one moment in time that we don't have a lot of context around.
And again, I'll just say, I'm not expecting anybody to make a decision. I really, you have to believe me when I say that that's up to, but I have, and the videos from the other presentations and, you know...
Right, but the fact is, this is, this was the actual document that was approved.
We have a regional agreement in front of us.
You do.
Yeah, right, that included two options.
Right.
Yeah.
And, I'm just going to, we'll, we'll have more discussions, because we're just going to go around in a circle anyway. And really, everybody has to, I think, get closer to it, obviously, they have been closer for a while now, and everybody else has to get closer to figure, figure out something.
Yeah, I think that ultimately, what helps, even me, who's, you know, this is year 12, would be to see something and have it explained in detail by someone that actually knows the law. And I'm not that person. And I'm not saying you guys aren't that person, but I remember when, I think it was Bond Council came and said to us what the process was, and then said what the implication of us adding that restriction on, there was a big difference, you know? And that we kind of, you know, hurt ourselves by, obviously, adding that restriction. Okay, so is there, was there more, Jim? I'm sorry.
Just the last one.
Okay.
This is on the section 15. I don't know when this would come up, but anyway. But that has to do with how the regionalization agreement has changed.
He did it, he already presented to us.
Happily. And what I'm going to talk specifically is, I mean, we, we can make changes, and then we present it to the town, we're unfamiliar with that process. Another way that it can happen is that any petitioner can get 10% of the registered voters. And this is to what, if you might remember, my wife Beth, who here spoke to, and I think, Michelle, I commented, like, you know, there may be limitations to what you can do town meeting-wise, too, that it would take, I don't think anybody in this room is going to be able to decide it, but just as a banner of policy, I wanted to add to the end of that, that a petitioner will have the right, a petitioner will have the opportunity to present it at member town meetings, but may only vote in the meeting that they are legally registered to vote in. So that, all it says is that, if you go out, say, in the case of Shirley, if you wanted to change anything in this document, you need 470 signatures, right? Or if you were in AIR, you need 735 signatures. And if somebody goes through that process and gets on a town meeting warrant, they should be allowed to make a presentation. That's all it says. It doesn't mean that you get to approve it, I mean, you can disprove it. All it says is that, if you go through all that work, you get your day in court. That's all it says.
Yeah. And, yeah.
We talked about this, this, that has no purview of the school committee, that's town business.
Well, except this agreement, to make this change, this agreement would have to be breached by both panels. And, and to Michelle's point is that we, this may or may not be something we can do, we don't know.
I would...
But it's something we have to look into, whether it's something, I mean, just from a...
You don't have to. I don't, I don't agree we should do that. It's, that's a, that's a meeting for town meeting, and who can present in front of town meeting. I don't think that's anything that we need to be spending our time on, frankly.
So, so, okay, we're clearly in different places all, that's okay.
I mean, the only, the only way that happens is, if there's one person in that room, in that town meeting, that recognizes the individual that wants to speak, then they speak. That's the requirement. One registered voter.
In, in, I don't know what it is in AIR, but in Shirley, if four people get up and say, if the, if the person who's asking to speak on any warrant article, not, not just school stuff, on anything, you know, you know how all town meetings, they have a visitor section, right? So if anybody wants to get up to speak to an issue, if, in Shirley, it's four people say, "I don't want to listen to them because they don't have standing," then they're, they're not allowed to speak.
Oh, so it's four? I'm sorry.
In Shirley, I don't know what it is in there, but in Shirley, it's four, right? That's how that can happen. And, but, what I'm saying is that if somebody goes through all the work to get to this point, they should be allowed to present.
I don't understand that. We can put what we want in our, it doesn't mean that it's going to change how town meeting operates.
Well, I think that's the question, is maybe to find out.
We need a legal review on this.
All right. I, I'm just saying that we don't have to. I don't think that's something I would think we need to take up. So I don't know if that's a vote or something, but I'm not...
Madam Chair.
Yeah, yeah.
I actually have to leave, I have to get it, my daughter.
We did reach out to Mars to see if there was any statute stating that members from a non-member, a non-resident school committee member would be able to speak in a, a town meeting. There is not. The only, the only statute that the state has is that the superintendents, and the superintendents, and like the business manager, would be able to, to speak on budget, budget issues at the town hall, excuse me, the town meeting. There is nothing in statute, and nor do they know of any language of any type of regional agreements where, where, where that can't happen.
Okay.
So I believe, Mr. Quincy, you were talking about a possible MOU between the school committee.
Right, that's another way that we might want to deal with it, separate from the agreement. And, and this could happen, suppose like the, I'll just start moving on, suppose the AIR town meeting is unable to, you know, right? Suppose Joyce makes a miraculous move, and she comes bounding back, and goes through the AIR town meeting, and somebody asks a question about the budget, right? Joyce would get up to speak, and I don't know how many people is in AIR, I don't know the rule, but a certain amount of people could stand up and say, "I don't want to listen to her because she's from Shirley, she doesn't vote."
Well, first, I think we should get what those rules are, because I...
Well, I don't know what in Shirley it's rules, so I don't know what AIR's rules.
I think the bar, AIR is very different. I think it's the reverse, only someone has to recognize, and out of...
Is, I, I apologize, because I have no idea about town meeting procedure, but is it each town that sets their procedure, or is it dictated by like...
Open meeting law?
Yeah, I, I don't know what the...
That's the thing.
I don't know what the answer to that is, like, why Shirley would have a different rule, like, if it's governed by the town? I suppose that's something we can find out.
So, so what I'm saying, you mean that you have to change, that, that we have to change? This brought up a second question in my mind, that we might need, hey, we can keep, by making a phone call to the moderator of each town, they can answer that question, right? Very simply, I should, I don't know who the moderator is in the area, but you can answer it here, and I can, I can have an answer for Shirley, exactly what the, how it operates there. But I think overall, we might want to, at some point, talk to the boards of selectmen to get an MOU, or actually, maybe we go to the board, we would probably go to the moderator, to get a, an MOU that says, like, a school committee member, because we represent everybody in AIR and Shirley, like, all the kids. So if, if Erica comes to the Shirley Town Meeting, and there's a discussion of what something has to do with the school, and she wants to speak, she should be allowed to speak in my opinion.
Yeah, but that's diff, that's different than...
That's not this, that's not this, yeah, that's not this at all. So I think, this just brought me to that, because I'm like, boy, this could, this is something that can actually happen, because, you know, there's always those people at something that can actually happen, because, you know, there's always those people at town meetings, right? That's just the way that goes. So I think we might want to have a, an MOU, or at least start that discussion with the moderators from both panels, that says, hey, how would this happen? You know, so we, we understand, it's like, look, the regional school committee members can speak to things that directly affect the schools in either town. Clearly, you can only vote in the town that you live in, but you should have a right to speak, you should have a right to address the assembly. And I think that's, I think that can just be handled with an MOU, but I don't know the law.
And one thing that may complicate it is, given share's pop, air's population, just combine the two towns, air's population, they could move to a representative town meeting instead of an open town meeting.
Anything could happen.
Which would also further complicate who should, right, then you would be voting on who shows the right, which would mean no longer anyone to show up.
Maybe what I would suggest, just because we're going to be talking to Robert this week anyway, and Robert is, in my eyes, very viewed in town meeting, is maybe ask him this question, and just, like, where, where do, you know, what is the, who do we go to? Who do we ask? Who governs town meeting in air? And, and if something like this, you know, is it even something that's feasible? And I, I think if he can't answer, he can direct us to who might, and since you're going to be talking to him, and Mike anyway, it might be a good place to start.
Absolutely, you can bring that up.
All right.
That's it?
That's it?
Right.
All right, so anybody else before I, all right, so I'm going to move on to policy review report, review of the wellness policy is up first.
I absolutely love the wellness policy, there's more, then you should be allowed to have.
Really?
Because everybody, because you have district people, right, because you should get the nerds, you got ten dollars, and they're all looking after their own stuff, and they're all, when they speak to what they know about, it's going to challenge, right?
Yeah.
It's across the board, so.
They're all good.
If you don't even attempt to compare this to what we have before, and the main problem I had with, if you didn't read what we had before, is that there were all these checks and balances that you're supposed to do, that no one's ever going to do, because nobody knows it better. This particular policy takes all that stuff away, and basically, in my kind of way, it says that, you know, the people that you hired to do these jobs know where they're going, and they live by certain set of rules that we know nothing about, and you just sort of let them go that way, like, you know, Dr. Reddy's been a custodian and superintendent, he's not been a nurse, and he's not run the cafeteria. You know, he just sort of lets those people do what they do, and assume that stuff is happening. The, what I will say is, what you will see on the ground, because we'll be talking with the parents, and the only thing that will change here from what we currently have happens in our district, if you turn to, want to page three. Okay, the second paragraph, no food items can be brought into the classroom for distribution to the class, this includes birthday celebrations. That's going to cause some noise.
Well, yes.
But you don't know who made this, you don't know what's in it, you don't, you don't know anything about the stuff that's being brought in. So you just can't have it. So that's there.
Can I?
But it also means.
What are we doing currently with that? Do you know?
People bring in stuff.
Like, is it, but is it limit, is it specific, like, specific to store bought things, or is it anything?
It's a wireless.
You should have said, what came home on Valentine Day.
Right.
Oh, okay, all right.
There are people bring in stuff, they share cookies, cupcakes, all that sort of stuff, as part of official celebrations, then right now, it says, you eat your own stuff. You can't give, you know, a certain amount of share that's going to happen in lunchroom, you can't stop that, but you can't have celebrations where somebody brings in a cake, and then next week, somebody brings in a bigger cake, and somebody made one in their own kitchen, but what's their kitchen look like, I don't know what that.
Okay.
So it basically says, we're just not going to do it, because there's no way to control that. So this means that we might be baking more cakes here, which we have the capability to do, or we might be contracting, who knows? But it just says, you can't, we can't allow this anymore. So that's a change from what we do, and that's something that you may, the other thing that changes is, let's see, in the.
Is the second sentence?
In the next paragraph down, okay, this is another big change.
We're even asked about the caffeine.
Is the caffeine still, is that prohibited now?
What's that?
The second, the sentence right after the birthday celebrations, where it says, no foods.
Yeah, caffeine is not allowed, and that's, there's a statute for that.
Okay.
Because I was trying to see if maybe we could, kids like tea.
Coffee, they go to Dunkin' before, right? Don't they come in with their Dunkin's cups?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, they can't bring in their Dunkin's cup?
We can't serve it.
Oh, yeah, but they can bring it in.
Yeah.
We can't, but if they bring it in, we don't have the release it, but we can't make it available for purchasing.
Right, okay.
Right, so that happens, people have COVID, right, whatever, but it all means that we can't do it, okay? Teachers can have it, they're on the road. The other thing, the next paragraph down, in the last sentence, is another change. If food is being cooked or prepared at the concession stand for any school event at any time, a serve safe certified personnel must be overseeing the operation for the duration of the event. So if you are cooking hamburgers, somebody who is certified to serve safe has to be there to make sure that we're not passing around stuff that people shouldn't be. If you're running the concession stand, and you're buying pizzas, doing any of that, that's cool, there's nothing wrong with that, but if you're going to be cooking on site there, then a serve safe person, certified serve safe person has to be there.
And so that's limited to the concession? It's cooked or, so like, there's that pancake breakfast that Laura A. White.
Yep.
That's not using a concession stand.
Right.
That's typically using our food service.
Okay.
And typically, the pancakes are pre-made, and they're, they're, they're all, they're cooked thoroughly.
Oh, my God, really?
But they're prepared, right, like, so somehow being heated.
They're being warmed.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this would require, I guess, would this require a serve safe certified personnel there? Are we already doing that?
All of our food service staff are serve safe certified, so we would have the, when you rent the kitchen, you, we normally require that you have food service staff there.
Can I just ask, well, go back to the concession stand, didn't we, for the Board of Health, have to give a list of serve safe?
That was on the list of requirements for the concession stand that we had to agree to.
Yeah, right, so we're do, we're doing that.
Right, and I, I believe we're not cooking anything in the concession stand, correct? We're, we're, we're going to be selling prepackaged goods.
Well, they were doing burgers, I think.
Yeah, that's, we talked about that, yep.
Oh, okay.
Well, this would just be, this language would just be if they were making burgers and hot dogs, but it wouldn't be if they had bought pizzas and were selling pizzas, right?
Right, if they weren't preparing it.
But I, I feel like when we did our application with the Board of Health for the concession stand, we had to agree that some, that serve safe professionals would be, so we are doing that.
So those are, see, really, the only two things that you would notice, the only other thing that I bring your attention to is that we, there was a, was a one-list committee that was supposed to meet every other month, which doesn't happen, because people don't have those kind of schedules, and it had basically anybody who's anybody was supposed to go to, so we replace that, if you go to the next to the last page, on the implementation, I'll leave the paragraph, the nurse leader, the business manager, Bill, the superintendent, the director of food services, and principals are to conduct an ongoing assessment of the wellness program annually, to help review policy compliance, assess progress, and determine areas of improvement. A summary presentation of the meeting results will be made to the school committee, and then we'll adjust it as necessary based on, so it basically says, once a year, anybody that's in here, you can either have to get together, go through it and figure out how we're doing, and then give us a presentation, and that's like the only statutory requirement that's in here right now. And I think that's doable.
All right, anyone have any questions?
No, it's sensible.
Thank you for the time that went into this.
Mm-hmm.
Chris? Chris has three questions.
No, I don't.
Just kidding.
Um, I lost where I was going. Can you speak, and my brain is still, I feel like reeling from sections D and N, so apologies if I'm just not processing the way I should, under competitive food, so back on page three, paragraph four, organizations of, starting organizations affiliated with, but this shows up a few other places, the idea of foods and beverages sold from midnight to, midnight before to 30 minutes after the school day, like, that's the way they're talking about this. So what that means is, these policies are really before-school programs, school, and then immediately after, but if Girl Scouts is using the cafeteria that evening, they are not complying with this. This is for school programs, and that's why we're specifying midnight to 30 minutes after.
And it also would not include PTL.
Okay.
Right, so they're handing out pizza and Coca-Cola at the dance.
Right. May I suggest an edit? We have a Director of Wellness, and they are not part of the compliance part of this, maybe adding the Director of Wellness to that, or unless I missed it.
We're being committed to personnel.
Sounds good to me.
Having come from a place where outside food was not allowed, the transition is difficult for many people, but it is absolutely worthwhile. The number of allergic reactions to things that went down greatly, and as soon as we figured out to communicate this in a positive way, and give other options besides the cupcakes and the candy, yeah, it was, it was rather smooth. And we would absolutely let people know that if they did send in the cupcakes, the tray would be eaten, eaten in a manner entirely by the principal and assistant principal before the end of the school day. So parents adjusted to it pretty quickly, and it's, it's just, it's a lot safer.
Thinking a lot of hard pencils and shamrock pencils.
Yeah, I mean, on the news today, right before I left for school committee, they were talking about how at one local school, the middle schoolers consumed edibles by accident, were sent to the hospital, and then during Halloween, again, middle schoolers might be a theme, someone handed out melatonin gummies, and the whole class fell asleep because they had all sat there and ate their candy. The teacher was happy, she graded papers, but, um, yeah, they all.
She wasn't concerned that the whole class was asleep?
Well, she figured it out, because when she went and looked, she found the person who had the melatonin gummies that they had given out to everybody, but it, it looked like, you know, gummies, it looked like strawberry gummies, and so the whole class ingested about nine milligrams of melatonin during the day.
Geez. So I think we'll be okay. I would have been concerned when my whole class was asleep.
Yeah, I'm sure that's something about the teacher.
Would have been worried about carbon monoxide.
Yeah.
I would have been like, why am I the one that's not falling asleep?
The only other sentence where I had a question, and I think it makes, probably makes sense, but again, my processing, top of page two, the first sentence, I think that maybe this is more of a, like, a wording thing, I mean, I think the point-of-sale program should be protecting all students' protected information, right, like, student privacy data is a thing, and maybe it's important that we called specifically out a student's free and reduced eligibility status, but generally, any student's protected information should be stored confidentially. So I, I didn't know if that was intentionally called out as being especially confidential, but, you know, theoretically, any protected information should be protected.
Right, I think that, that falls underneath, I don't know if you guys in the school system have a different regulation, but it falls underneath almost like a HIPAA regulation, so.
Yeah, HIPAA.
Yeah, so it's the same thing, so for example, at the hospitals, you know, if you have a gift, a gift shop, there's a specific regulation for the gift shop, because it's still protected information because of the credit card swipe machine, so I think that's why.
Yeah.
This is in here.
My only question was, like, if there was a need to call out specifically free and reduced lunch eligibility status, or if the point-of-sale program should protect student information.
If I may.
Yeah.
When I first became a principal many years ago, I had this conversation with the Director of Food Services, because the practice then was that free and reduced eligibility lists were readily available.
Yeah.
To people in schools.
Yep.
And then with some enacting of legislation and/or the changes to the wellness policies at the federal level, that process seemed to change.
Yeah.
And those lists became much more protected, where the only person who really was supposed to have access to them at the time was the Director of Food Service, obviously the superintendent, and that was it.
Yeah.
So in my humble opinion, I think calling out this particular piece of information, I think for this is important.
And is it just the point-of-sale program that should be doing it, or just like the policies, like, again, like, the reality is, like, the point-of-sale program can be great, but you still have, like, a list up in the corner of the classroom with, like, I don't know.
I see what you're saying.
But no one else would have access to that information.
Okay.
Except the point-of-sale program.
That's all, okay.
Okay.
So that is, that's really the intent.
Yeah, okay.
And if, if, say, for instance, like, the Commonwealth goes with the free lunch, this is kind of moot anyway, right?
Right, right now it is, but the point-of-sale system, all that free and reduced is backend, so the food service director has it, and so when they punch in their meals, the count, the items that they take, nobody can see that that child is free and reduced, but the food service director will see that on the backend.
Okay.
When, when, it wasn't universal, free lunch, there was no exchange of cash, so the, the bill would be paid a different way, all kids, whether they're free, reduced, were paying for lunch, punch in a number, a code, so there really wouldn't be a need for, for any type of hard copy list of who was getting free lunch and who wasn't.
So there's no cash involved in cafeteria lunch?
Not with kid, I mean, no, I'm not sure if parents pay in cash, and the kids will sometimes bring it down in an envelope in the morning, but while they're getting lunch, no, there's no exchange of cash.
Okay, so it's like they have an account.
It's a PIN number, they have an account, it's a PIN number, yep.
Okay.
Great.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. What's next steps on this one? Do we vote on it tonight, or is this like a first read, or?
I think we probably won't, next time, because you guys just saw it, minutes ago.
Right, and can we vote? We can't vote.
I don't think we, it's a.
We can't.
I think we have to do a first read, technically, right?
Yeah, because we have our next meeting.
That's coming later.
Why don't we put it on to vote for our next meeting?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so let's, let's roll through section F.
Yeah, and I think it's my first question, like, we definitely should do section F, it is super fast, and my question is, like, do we have the stamina to go through section G?
Well, you did point out that the next meeting is short.
Yeah.
We can move it to the next meeting.
Yeah, so let's, let's do F.
Michelle's like, do it tonight, you're over with. But it's almost nine, Michelle, you want to go watch an episode of your show before you go to bed? Go.
Take the ones that that kid was hanging out.
All right, section F, so what was shared with you in advance was both the, was two documents. The first was the policy analysis, which was the recommendation, or the analysis done by Mas, where they compared their sort of boilerplate policy with ours, as well as a redlined version of, for us to review, which took most of those recommendations, if not all, I don't know, I'm trying, it's been a while since we actually met. And so what would be helpful, if there's any feedback on policy FA through FF, that we can, I'll take notes as we go, but.
So I started with the FA, when I reviewed both of them, and the facility development goals, it's really, the only time this is going to get read is tonight, right, because no one's going to go into the policy to figure out what, what our goals are here. I took a look at, I like the MSC ones, how we use it as is, because it's way more general, certainly just specific, which is basically all you're looking, you're just looking to cover a base, and I just thought that was easier. So that was my only comment there.
Was to take the.
MSC and just use it as is.
Yeah, that was, yeah. Yeah, that was, yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
The next one, I think it didn't belong to that. FFS three retirement facilities, it's out of place, and the note there makes no sense at all. So just regard that whole note thing. I don't know what they're talking about, where that is. Maybe somebody just had a bad keystroke.
Yes, FCB.
Yeah, just pretend that's not there, right? FB, facility planning.
Actually, just pause for one minute, I'm just trying to see. FC?
FCB shows up later right now.
Oh yeah, so it's put in the wrong order.
Yeah. Well, there's two FCBs. And the first one, I don't know, doesn't make any sense with retirement facilities.
It's, you mean regarding the protected classes?
Yeah.
Because we don't include gender identity? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, the retired.
That has nothing to do with retirement facilities.
Yeah, that's.
Doesn't exist in there at all.
Okay, 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 now I'm with you, Jim, sorry.
It was just a bad keystroke.
Yeah, okay, now I'm with you, okay.
So I would just like to ignore that, that one, because it comes up later, retirement facilities too now. So I would just ignore that one right now. Then I get to facilities planning, that's just fine, whatever it is. FCB, retirement facilities seem fine the way it was, the cash. Naming the new facilities, I like ours better only because it's just like three months to do it with our community. We're always, we're partial to that, and everybody found something they can live with. So I would not change our naming of the facilities the way it was.
Oh yeah, we went through that.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, we're still lined up.
And then memorial, I didn't have memorials in my faculty board, you know, we could want that.
I think, oh, because I think we opted not to include it.
Right.
So MASC has a policy explicitly around not creating memorials in your buildings.
Right.
So in the example of a student passes away, you don't like make that locker the Chris Rudeberg Memorial Locker.
Yeah.
And so we don't have those. It felt like something that we, you know, again, if it would be helpful to see the version that MASC has, we could absolutely share it with you all, but given we had a relatively rigorous policy for naming things in and around our district, it wasn't clear that it was absolutely needed. And MASC felt like it could be used at our discretion. So if it's helpful to see, happy to share it. But it was specifically about naming something shortly after the death of a student or faculty.
The only, the only thing that gets me thinking is like, would it be useful to have a policy? You know, it's always some tragedy, right? Would it be useful to have a policy for the administration saying, we thank you very much for your sentiment and wanting to do this, to have a granite memorial to. But we have a policy that we have to follow before.
I see what you're saying.
Could happen, you know, just to let some time go on. I don't know if that's helpful or not helpful.
It actually would be. And what I was going to say, if we could have something in there about having an active memorial, such as a scholarship, a, we've unfortunately been put in this situation this year where we have been recommending this. A scholarship to send someone to a cheerleading camp or to send someone to, depending on who it's for and what it's about. And the person recommending the active memorial would then also be responsible for its continuation. Because what, what happens is very well intentioned, people are recommending these things, and then all of a sudden it is now the district's job to maintain passive memorials, such as wings or trees or monuments or benches. And even the active memorials, at times, people would then expect the district to, to fund a scholarship or. It's not always feasible for us to do that.
So we'll bring them.
So this is, yeah, we can absolutely bring it if it's helpful. It is three, four sentences, I can read real quick the recommendation. So under memorials, the school committee recognizes that the death of a student, member of staff, or prominent community member is deeply felt by the school community. As places designated primarily to support learning, school sites should not serve as the main venue for permanent memorials. Permanent memorials within the school shall be limited in form to perpetual awards or scholarships. Any permanent memorials in existence before the adoption of this policy can only be removed by a vote from the school committee.
So how would that prohibit like, like the bench that we have for, say, Mary Wilson? Or, you know, I think we do have some, I mean, I'm not saying that would stay, obviously, but moving forward, would that prohibit us from, from doing a bench for a staff member?
Yep.
Okay, I don't know how I feel about that.
Well, I think, I think the perpetual one, I think that the active one would be better. And the reason being, like the example that Dorothy gave us, was eventually as time elapses, nobody knows who that is. And then you just have this area that's within the building that, and sometimes they may like need the area, or like, for example, like when Jim was talking about a wing, and like, let's say there's a memorial right there, and then all of a sudden, everybody gets all upset because there's this memorial there that they would have to tear down and they can't do. So I guess what they were seeing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, what she was seeing is what, the reason why they had adopted this policy is because a lot of schools were having problems with erecting those things.
Or, yeah, and again, it's the idea of like, if you have the additional policy about not having memorials, it doesn't mean you can't name things after people, right? Like, you can sell bricks and put people's names on it. You can have tracks, you can have, you know, there's things that you can do to recognize prominent members of the community. The idea is that you wouldn't have a like memorial.
That's, yeah, I get it.
So there's a distinction, a slight distinction in that, like again, we have a library named after, you know, prominent faculty, but you wouldn't necessarily, again, after the fact, have a, specifically a memorial.
Yeah, no, I get it. I just, you know, like the scholarship, I'd love to see as, you know, a scholarship, but that's also, if it's going to be an annual thing, that's a decent amount of money that, you know, and I don't know how you guys handle it when someone wants to start a scholarship in the name of somebody. But if it's, you know, is it just?
It's, the scholarship's not funded by the district.
Right, but I, but what I mean, so for instance, I'm involved with another school district in, anyway, it doesn't matter, but they require when you want to do a named scholarship and, you know, for someone that's deceased or whatever, you have to set up that scholarship fund with $10,000. And then it's a perpetual $500 a year scholarship, like that's how they do it. And that's, you know, because then they're guaranteed to have that money to give out because it's invested with other monies and things like that. But, you know, I guess what I'm saying is that a named scholarship can be an expensive thing that, you know, people might not realize that it could just be, you know, you're funding it maybe for two years or whatever, depending on what, how much money you started with. And I don't know if we have any kind of policy on that or any instructions when someone wants to do something like that.
I don't believe we, not that I know of.
It might be in our financial policies.
Yeah.
Establishment.
Yeah, I would just be curious so that, you know, there are going to be times that someone's going to come forward. And we do have scholarships that we give out at graduation that are in honor of people. And, you know, how are those handled? Are they just every year you ask, are you going to give the money? Or do we, you know what I mean, like, just curious.
I'm wondering, like, can we get creative with that, you know, with that idea in the sense that maybe it's not a scholarship, maybe there's, I know there's different assemblies that you have throughout the year. What if it comes down to a student who exhibits or characterizes whomever or whatever that memorial is, and they have some kind of, I don't want to say perk or advantage in like a smarmy way, but there may be some kind of other benefit that they may get. Or maybe it's that they have a written letter of recommendation upon graduation. Like I think maybe if we advertise some other ways where monetarily, if they can't, if they can't do, you know, the money, then maybe we can have, you know, this, this other kind of idea. And then it might incentivize the student body more around some of the strategic goals or plans that we have with the school district tying in with something that we're memorializing a person for. You know, just to get, in the event that you have to, you know, say this to, you know, someone who's coming up with the idea, you could say, okay, well, maybe creatively, if you can't do that, maybe this might be a better idea. Not that I'm saying you want people to flood it, but I'm just saying, you know.
I mean, one thing to note is that our current policy around naming, assuming we stick with it and pass it and that's what we go with, we can only name something for someone who is living or has been deceased more than three years.
Right.
You know, and again, that idea is like, someone passes away, you don't immediately say like, great, now this is the Chris Rudeberg LGI Room. But you, you want to have some amount of time passed, that's something that we did recognize within our current policy.
I think it's.
And so currently, even if we did not adopt FFA around memorials, the school committees, the body that would approve naming anything. And we currently do not have the ability to name anything after someone who has passed away more recently than.
Okay.
Yeah, true point. We can lean on that. So why don't we just ask for more, if we've got it covered under.
Yeah, unless, again, unless it's helpful to recognize that like it could be. But I think we have it covered.
So, but to Adam, I don't want to miss your point. So because you were talking about having the active, I want to say scholarships, but that's not the word you used. You know, that last portion of the, the MASC policy that you're reading? I'm wondering if we need to add that into the naming section where it talks about only having.
Well, we could include this.
Right, that's what I'm.
Is this what you're asking? Like you're saying it would be helpful to have a policy so that it would, it would make it clear that we're looking for, we would be looking or interested in active?
It's not that we're looking for active memorials, it's that we're recommending active memorials.
Right.
There are, there are, the, the school isn't the place. The school district isn't the place to have the memorial. We can certainly help people distribute the, the award, but there are like annual golf tournaments to raise money for these types of things that people run on their own. The school district really shouldn't be fundraising for this or. Unless it is, is something like you described, where it's something that we're going to be able to give every single year. When I said scholarship for, for whatever, I'm thinking it could be a one-time thing in honor of this person, doesn't need to be every year. But we aren't looking to be the people that are responsible for these memorials.
No, absolutely, and I would 100% agree with that.
We certainly will help our students when they, when they are grieving and need adult help and expertise on how to set these things up.
Right.
And certainly do that. But if it is something that they want to happen annually, then they're going to have to keep that going.
Right, 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 100%.
Right, absolutely.
And so even that, I think we would want to, again, we can, I can take the next step before our next meeting to take FFA, add a sentence to it, send it to you, Michelle, so that we can look at it next week. Because even in here, it does not specify that the school district is not the one who's organizing.
Right.
Like I think we should.
Yeah, we should put that in there.
This is something that is.
I found another local district that has one that's four lines as well, it's a little different.
Okay.
Says, the school committee recognized the death of a student, member of staff, or prominent community member is deeply felt by the school community. As places designed primarily to support learning, school sites should not serve as the main venue for permanent memorials. Permanent memorials within the school shall be limited in form to perpetual awards or scholarships. Any permanent memorials in existence before the adoption of the policy can only be removed by a vote of the school committee.
Yeah, same, yeah.
That was, yeah, that matches, I think the thing that is not, is, yes, that matches the MASC version.
Yep.
What's not in there is, and tell me if this would be helpful, the idea that permanent memorials shall be limited to, in form to perpetual awards or scholarships, that does not address the like, and can the school organize the scholarship?
Yeah. I think we should add that sentence in there, I think that's.
Like, is that worth trying to clarify that language in the policy or?
I don't, I don't think it's, it says that we're going to do it.
Yeah.
So it gives us the flexibility to, to work with our students and, and community if they need support, doing that. But the perpetual part of it, and then the guidelines of, I love the idea of having those guidelines readily available. So for someone who wants to do this, they know exactly what they need to do and the money they need to raise for that to happen. That would be extremely helpful because we can then point them in two directions. Here's what you need to do if you are really interested in a yearly scholarship. If you're looking just for an active memorial for right now, here are some options and we can, we can help our students.
Okay, great, so let's, we'll add FFA to look at next week and hopefully vote on.
Okay.
And then I would just ask the school committee if, again, you have the stamina and time to go through section G or if you would prefer to put that on next week's agenda.
Next week's agenda, I think.
Next week's agenda.
Right. Do I need to make a motion or can we move?
I think we can move because it wasn't up for our vote or anything. We'll just move section G to our next agenda on the next week's agenda. And we did.
Yeah?
Yeah, all right. So item 12, chairperson's notes, there are none. Item 13, other topics for discussion not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
None.
Anybody? Erica has none, does anybody have anything?
The E and D transfers memos, that is, we talked about in the budgets, right? Great, I just wanted to make sure that, I'm just trying to match up the documents with the agenda. Perfect, I have none.
All right, so then we'll move on to communications, please. Oh, here are my communications. Thank you.
Okay. So Wednesday, March 8th, is the middle school students touring the high school during the day. Also, there is the ASEF meeting, Air Shirley Education Foundation meeting at 7:00 PM at the High School Media Center. And also Laura A. White Family Math Night and Book Fair at Laura A. White from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. On Thursday, March 9th, the eighth grade family night at the high school, there'll be a presentation on life at the high school and a building tour that will take place from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, again, that's at the high school. On Tuesday, March 14th, there is a PTO meeting at 7:00 PM at the middle school library. And we, and on Wednesday, March 15th, is the next school committee meeting at 6:30 at the middle school library. Okay, sorry, Tuesday and then Wednesday, sorry guys, I'm a little, little loopy. Friday, March 17th, trimester two ends for grades preschool through eight. On Wednesday, March 22nd, there's a half day of school and professional development for teachers. The dismissal times for the high school and middle school will be 11:20, and for the elementary schools, it will be at 12:15. Also on Wednesday, March 22nd, there's a special education advisory committee meeting. It is remote, it'll be at 6:30. And then there's a business meeting at 7:00 PM. There will be a guest speaker, Laurel Collins. She's an educational consultant and advocate. On Monday, March 27th, report cards are issued for preschool through eighth grade. On Thursday, March 30th, there's a half day of school for preschool through fifth grade or elementary school. The dismissal will be at 12:15 for evening conferences. And then Friday, March 31st, there'll be a half day for elementary students. Their dismissal will be at 12:15 for afternoon teacher conferences.
All right, thanks Erica.
All right, so guessing there's no need for executive session. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
You make the motion to adjourn at 9:20?
I would second that motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned at 9:20, thank you.